Vera.
Here.
Goots.
Here.
Carlson.
Here.
Dingfelder.
Here.
Seater.
Seater.
I am here.
Yanda.
Here.
Manis Galco.
Here. All right, thank you very much. Item number nineteen, if you are to speak or going to speak, please raise your right hand so we can swear you in.
Do you swear your, do you swear affirm you would tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
That is.
Yes. Thank you, and clerk's office did receive ring comments on this item.
And do we happen to have any public comment?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Anybody at the convention center, ma'am?
Yes, we do. We have one person.
One person, okay. Who would then like to begin? Mr. Manassi, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, counsel. Item number nineteen is file number REZ twenty dash thirty-eight for the property located at thirty-one oh five Bay Oaks Court. The request before you is rezoning from RM thirty-five to P D, and that's planned development for residential multifamily and residential single family attached. I would like to defer to the planning commission for their report, and if you'd please return to me afterwards.
Thank you very much. Ms. Malone.
Jennifer Malone with the planning commission. If I could just share my screen, please.
While we're waiting for that, Mr. Chairman, I just want to ensure the council members who I see present, I believe I don't see Councilman Vera or Councilman Dingfelder. Is that correct?
Hmm.
Councilman Dingfelder, are you?
He's here. I've been here all along.
If you're not on, if you're not on screen, councilmen, we can't know that. So please, councilmen, for the purposes of the hearing, please make sure that you're on the screen so it doesn't become an issue, if it should become an issue. Thank you. And again, I don't see Councilman Vera. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, go ahead. Jennifer Malone.
Jennifer Malone with your planning commission staff. I'll present on item REZ twenty thirty-eight. This is located in the South Tampa Planning District. A portion of the site is located within the coastal high hazard area. The closest park is the Frank Ball Park. It is also within a level A and B recreation zone. It is located along Bay Shore Boulevard. We have MacDill Avenue, the Selman Expressway, borders the subject site as well. It is, these parcels outlined in the purple. The adopted future land use of the subject site is residential fifty. That is a very intensive future land use designation. You do see along Bay Shore Boulevard to the south in the darker colored is an even higher category than is residential eighty-three. So that would consider more residential density to the south in the surrounding area. We also have the community mixed use thirty-five to the north in the pink that allows for commercial uses. In the community, commercial thirty-five in the red is all allows for commercial uses as well as commercial intensive uses. So this subject site is surrounded by some very intensive future land use designations. And residential fifty is a future land use designation by the comprehensive plan, and this area has been planned for that development pattern. The planning commission did find this consistent with the comprehensive plan. I would note that the applicant is proposing a hundred and eighty units, but the maximum with the density on the subject site, they could get up to about two hundred and thirty-two per the planning commission staff report. So they're not meeting the full density of that residential fifty future land use category. The, as I said, that the surrounding parcels allow for a high-density development in the surrounding area. There is open space provided that the planning commission found to be consistent with the plan. We've also found that the design aspect and pedestrian connectivity was consistent and furthering policies of the plan. And that concludes my presentation. I am available for any questions.
Any questions? Mr. Manassi.
Thank you, Chair. If you would please share my screen. Please let me know when you see the REZ twenty title block.
Yes, we do, sir. Go ahead.
Excellent. Ryan Manassi, planning and development, number nineteen again is file number REZ twenty dash thirty-eight. The applicant is proposing to rezone the property at thirty-one oh five Bay Oaks Court from residential multifamily thirty-five, RM thirty-five, to planned development PD to allow for multifamily residential uses. The property is generally located south of West Bay to Bay Boulevard, west of Bay Shore Boulevard, east of the Selman Expressway, along West Santiago Street. The site contains an existing apartment complex which will be demolished to allow the proposed residential development. Site is one parcel which contains areas to the north and south of West Santiago Street. The northern parcel contains fifty-five thousand and fifty-nine square feet, and the southern parcel contains a hundred forty-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-three square feet, for a total project area of four point six five acres. The project proposes, proposes two twenty-seven-story buildings containing a total of a hundred and eighty units with a maximum building height of three hundred and twenty-eight feet. That height is subject to Hillsborough County Aviation Authority and Federal Aviation Authority approval. The project proposes vehicular access on West Santiago Street with surface and garage parking provided. The required parking is three hundred and sixty-seven spaces with five loading berths, and the development is providing a total of three hundred and ninety-three spaces with four loading berths. The Santiago Street, I'm sorry, the proposed building setbacks are on the north parcel, twenty-five feet on the north and south, and that would be on West Bay to Bay Boulevard and Santiago Street, and seven feet on the west and the east. On the south parcel would be seven feet on the north on Santiago Street and south, and twenty-five on the west, abutting the Crosstown Expressway, and then east on Bay Shore Boulevard. The property is surrounded by residential multifamily uses to the north and south in the RM thirty-five and PD zoning districts, commercial and residential multifamily uses to the east in the residential office, RO one, PD, and RM thirty-five zoning districts, and the Crosstown Expressway to the west. The slide before you on, on the screen right now is are the proposed waivers. They are requesting five waivers from the code. The map in front of you shows the subject site, and Jennifer did a good job showing you on her aerial, but I'll just go over it again. Bay to Bay is to the north, and then the subject site is cross-hatched in the green. And as you can see, the Santiago Street goes through with the Selman Expressway, and then MacDill will run here, north and south, mainly hitting this property in the middle near Santiago. Our aerial for the city of Tampa shows the outlined property hatched in red. And as you can see, it's more of that L shape kind of cantered. There are no historic landmarks, local or national, within the thousand-foot buffer of this property. And then the, one of the, the sheets of the site plan, I included on the slides. If you have any questions about it, please let me know. But it shows the parcel to the north, and then Santiago Street in the center with the south portion being the other tower. And then the attached units, as you can see them outlined here, just south of Santiago Street, and then there's three more over here on this southwest corner of the property. There is access over here off of Bay Shore, and then as well as MacDill. The elevations provided show the east on the left and the west on the right. And then the, on the left side, it will show the north, and then on the right side, it will show the south. And then the pictures provided are just showing you some of the surrounding area, other than just the aerial. North, there's some, you can see some multi-level structures, as well as the expressway entrance here, and then the underpass and expressway. This is west, looking down Bay to Bay. And then east, and you can see this is part of the subject parcel, and then going towards Bay Shore, Bay Shore Boulevard here. This is the west axis off of MacDill, underneath the overpass, and then this is looking south on MacDill at this overpass, just giving you another angle of that street. The west property boundary, more or less, with the expressway abutting that west side, and then on the right hand, a right photo, it shows the Santiago Street going towards Bay Shore. And then again, this is east on Santiago. It's a little closer to show you the Bay Shore access. And then this is west, looking back in that internal street. North on Bay Shore Boulevard, and then south on Bay Shore Boulevard. In review of the application, development review and compliance staff, we have reviewed the application. We find it inconsistent with the City of Tampa Land Development Code. Please reference findings by transportation related to the reduction of the required loading berth areas and the reduction of the required number of loading berths. Should it be the pleasure of city council to approve this application, and the waivers listed in the staff report on page one, further modifications are required between first and second reading, and they're provided on the revision sheet attached to the staff report. Should you have any questions for natural resources, transportation or planning staff, we are available for your questions.
Do we have any questions for the gentleman? All right, hearing none. We have the applicants up. I see a room full.
Good evening. True Gardner. And just a quick procedural issue. I sent an email earlier to the clerk. But a couple things. One, we requested five additional minutes of time to present. We're hoping to not need that. We've got a lot to cover, and we've got some people in different locations as well. So that's one request. And then a gentleman, George Vaca, is speaking on behalf of some people that are objecting to this. He's requested fifteen minutes, and which we are fine with. We've spoken with him and told him that. But in return, we'd like to add an additional five minutes of rebuttal time.
Okay. Mr. Shelby, you're muted.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I believe Mr. Vaca has, I did, did make that request, and I was wondering if it's possible to do the housekeeping now so we can address that issue. Because I believe, this being a virtual hearing, we don't have speaker waiver forms, and we have, we're operating under Rule Six B, under your council's rules of procedure. So I'd like to read that into the record, just so that you're aware of that and you take action accordingly. So if I understand, the petitioner's representative, five additional minutes on their, their case in chief, and depending on what is granted to Mr. Vaca, five additional minutes. Counsel, I would ask that you ask the clerk to bring forth Mr. Vaca and swear him in so we can address that and have that squared away before the hearing commences with the petitioner and the public comment.
All right, Clark, if you could please do that.
Evening.
Mr. Vaca needs to turn.
Please turn your camera on, sir. All right.
Evening.
They're going to swear you in now, Mr. Vaca.
Do you swear affirm you would tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
May I inquire, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, sir, yes.
Mr. Vaca, you sent a letter into the chairman requesting additional time, is that correct?
Yes, sir, and also to, to advise that I believe almost all of the residents of the Stovall have given me authority, as well as Dr. Gross, who is on this call, to represent their interest in terms of putting forth the positions of the residents of the Stovall, which is the condominium directly to the south of this proposed development on Bay Shore.
And what is your request of counsel, then, sir?
My request is to allow us to have, it was going to be equal time, because I understood it to be fifteen minutes, but fifteen minutes of time for us to represent and articulate the views of, of the people in the Stovall, their objections to this development at, at current, and to let council know what our concerns are, primarily with the side setback.
Well, before you get into, before you get into the merits of it, the question, sir, is now, from your letter, you said the fifteen minutes would be split between you and another speaker. Is that correct?
That is correct. That would be Dr. Stephen Gross, a member of the board.
Okay.
If you're looking for, if you're looking for a motion, I'll give you a motion.
I will. I'm going to be asking, I'm going to be asking for a motion in a minute, but the one thing I want to be clear about, for the purposes of this hearing, is what effect does your presentation have on to, how many speakers are signed up for this presently, who are signed in? Madam Clark?
Can I give you a definite number of who's signed in? But there's definitely at least fifty members signed in, and seventy-six in total registered to speak.
Okay, and, and I suspect what you're prepared to do is to represent that those speakers who choose not to speak as a result of you having this time will drop off and log out and watch through, let's say, television or, or internet, so that the clerk doesn't have those people lined up as speakers. Is that correct?
That is what I asked those people to do once I was recognized as authorized to speak on their behalf.
Mr. Shelby, Mr. Shelby, can I interrupt you? There's a, it sounds like there's a presumption that all fifty are one side or the other. I've seen a lot of letters in favor. I've seen a lot of letters opposed. So my guess is some of the speakers are in favor of the application as well.
And that may very, and that may very well be true, but I just wanted it to be clear for the record that that's, and by the way, that was the letter that, that was the, that was the intent raised in Mr. Vaca's letter. That's certainly not a condition. Let me read, before you take action, counsel, I want to read the rule so that it's clear to you what you need to do. Rule Six B states that requests for additional time may only be granted if the participant making the request, in this case, it's two people, the petitioners representative and, and the neighbors of the Stovall, the association. Requests for additional time may only be granted if the participant making the request establishes to the satisfaction of council that additional time is necessary to afford procedural due process. Council members shall, by majority vote, grant or deny the request and determine the additional time necessary, if any. In the event that a participant in a quasi-hudicial public hearing is given additional time to make a presentation, then the petitioner may request additional time for purposes of rebuttal as necessary to afford procedural due process, which I believe Mr. Gardner presented a letter to the clerk and to city council regarding his position. So that being the case, a motion is in order with regard to the petitioner, and then a council wishes a motion is in order with regard to Mr. Vaca, and then you can move forward with this hearing, knowing in advance the roadmap going forward.
All right. Is there a motion, then, for the petitioner's request to grant that? We're going to take two separate motions. Do we have a motion? Councilman Miranda. You're muted, sir.
I would ask that, I know Mr. Vaca is representing the petitioner, but is he representing all seventy-something petitioners that sign in, or they're going to be, he's going to represent twenty, and there's forty that are going to speak? I think we're going to have that clarified in, in advance. I don't know if he represents all of them or most of them. We have to have that, in my book, known ahead of time.
May I respond? First, I looked at the list. I didn't recognize all of the people whose names are on the list to the extent that the people identified on the list are from the Stovall. I believe I have, if not unanimous, certainly near unanimous authority on behalf of all of the residents to represent their interest, along with Dr. Gross tonight.
Well, I, I take that, if you're worried, and I appreciate it very much. I appreciate it. However, I want to make sure that no one can say after Mr. Vaca and the other gentlemen speak on their behalf of that great community there, that others don't come up and say there's forty or fifty others that are not following this. I like to have them come first, if possible.
I can, I can assure you from the Stovall, there won't be fifty people coming up and, and speaking.
All right, no problem with me. Thank you very much, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Gardner, may I ask you, do you have any objection as to the way we're moving forward here tonight?
No, we're fine. Again, to clarify, we asked for five additional minutes in our case in chief, just because of all that we need to cover. And then we have spoken with Mr. Vaca, received his letter. We are fine with council granting the fifteen minutes to him, but in return, we just asked for five minutes of rebuttal. And, and to clarify, of the seventy-six mentioned, I believe many of those are, are in support. So, Mr. Brandon, I don't know whether that helps you, but there are a substantial amount from the Stovall. But I understand it is those will drop off, and, and that list will be reduced. And, and there are, there might be some others as well that are in opposition, but the majority of those that drop off will be Stovall residents.
Thank you, sir.
And of course, I should just point out that if there's somebody who's not related to the association or related to Mr. Vaca, and they want to speak in opposition, and they're not, they, they shouldn't be limited by this agreement between the, the petitioner and the, and the association attorney. So if that can be, if that's, if that's clear, why don't we just begin with the motion to grant the applicant represented by Mr. Gardner, the time that he has suggested for his case in chief and for the rebuttal.
Who was that? Who made the motion? Who made the motion? Anybody?
I did. I was trying to make a motion early on to give them their fifteen minutes. We just took fifteen minutes to talk about it.
Counsel, please, I'm trying to make this record as clear as possible. And what I'm asking you to do is to not take any shortcuts and not clip any corners, and let's follow the procedures so that we don't have any questions. So I ask you to please be patient, because if we do it right, and I like to say that an ounce of procedure is worth a pound of litigation. So if we can avoid that, let's please do so. Is there a motion by counsel with regard to the applicant?
So move Vera. Your motion, Councilman Vera, do we have a second?
Okay, Miranda.
Second from Councilman Miranda. Is there any objection? Any objection? Hearing none. Without any objection, by unanimous consent, the motion passes. Now for the second motion.
With regard to the association represented and the Stovall residents represented by Mr. Vaca.
Do we have a motion?
No, move Vera.
Motion from Councilman Vera, second by Councilman Goots. Do we have any objection? Any objection? Hearing none, hearing no objection. By unanimous consent, the motion passes. Thank you very much, sir.
Mr. Manis Galco, I have one request, and that is in order to make this a seamless hearing, having that many people lined up to speak for any one hearing is an amazing burden for the clerk under this platform. And as Mr. Vaca represented, there are those people who will choose now who are logged in or who are planning to phone in and register, that if they're registered, if they no longer have the need to talk, my suggestion and my request in speaking with the clerk, is that those people, as I stated at the beginning of the meeting, have the opportunity to watch this either on television, on cable TV, or on the internet at tampagov.net livestream. The request now, Mr. Vaca, to those people would be to log out of GoToWebinar so they can watch this meeting without having been registered or needing to be registered as a participant.
That was the, that was the request that was made of the residents this afternoon, contingent upon recognition that they would have me to be able to speak for them. So I assume that they are now logging off and will join us back again, either the television or the internet.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Chairman, I turn the meeting back to you, and thank you for your patience, counsel.
Thank you very much. We will begin now with Mr. Gardner, sir. Go ahead.
Great, thank you. It's True Gardner, four hundred North Avenue Drive. I'm both honored and humbled to appear tonight to present Related's project, which, if approved, will truly be an iconic project for Tampa. For the first time in Tampa's history, we have an internationally renowned developer, working with an internationally known architect on a project that will carry the Ritz Carlton name, which is a brand known worldwide for the highest quality in design and service. I'd like to start by introducing our team. With me tonight from Related is Mike Hammond and Naze Wahab, my fellow law partner Tyler Hudson, and our firm's planner Brittany Barnett. We also have our experts with us is Ricky Pederica, who's our project arborist. Virtually, we have Artie Centron and Matt Fiemel, who are civil engineers with Tim Lee Horn. Steve Henry is also virtual. He's our traffic consultant. And with the firm of Architect Tonica, we have the architects, Bernardo Fort Bressia, who's in Miami, and we've seen him virtually. And then with us tonight here is Patrick Giannini. And we've submitted all the CVs of our experts. And so with that, and since this is such an impactful project for Tampa- And so with that, uh, and since this is such an impactful project for Tampa, I really want the focus of this presentation to be on the vision and the design aspects of the project. That said, I wanna cover a few issues relative to our application. In advance of the hearing, we submitted a detailed supplemental memo in support of our reselling. First and foremost, just wanna make sure council members, you, you've received that.
I have a request, counsel. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Is it possible, is it possible that Mr. Vaca could be taken off screen now because it is the petitioner's, um, presentation, and he can come back on when it's his time to come back? Can the clerk arrange for that, video wise? There we go. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Gardner.
Sure. So my first question was, I just wanted to make sure the council members received the supplemental memo. We've got a different, uh, project slides that we're going to, going through, but as far as the legal case, um, that's, a lot of that is set forth in the supplemental memo.
Maybe, maybe the key question is, did the clerk receive it? Because, uh, I did notice some legal documents in the clerk's file when I was going through the quasi, the quasi-information, so.
Yeah. I have it in my email, too.
Yes, the clerk did receive it, and it was distributed to all the council members' emails.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to say that covers a lot of, of the detail behind this, and, uh, we're happy to discuss any of these points, any of those points made in greater detail. Uh, but in short, our application has been found to be consistent with the comprehensive plan by the planning commission staff, and our project has been found to be consistent with eight out of ten of the city reviewing agencies. We've established our compliance with the waiver criteria for the technical inconsistencies noted by the other two reviewing agencies. And with that, I'd like to share my screen.
Go ahead, sir. All right, we see it. Go ahead, sir, you may begin.
So from a density standpoint, our request is to replace an apartment building that was constructed in the nineteen seventies, and that contains one hundred and seventy-six units with a one hundred and eighty unit townhome condominium development. A traffic study actually was not required for this project because our traffic impact will actually be less by over fifty percent, and shown on your screen on the left are the current trips generated by the apartment complex of one thousand one hundred and thirty-six daily trips per day versus what we are proposing, which is a full buildout of eight hundred and forty-four trips per day. Then, the only findings of inconsistencies in the staff report are technical in nature and are due to our waivers. In brief, our waivers, one, allow for the better design of our townhomes by allowing them to line a parking garage and to create a courtyard effect. Two, we are proposing to eliminate one loading berth, but four will still be provided, which we believe is more than sufficient. And then lastly, we're requesting to remove greater than fifty percent of the trees that currently exist on site, but we believe what will be relocated or replanted will be far superior to what is currently there. We have full justifications in our supplemental package, and we and our experts are available to answer any questions on the variances. At this time, Tyler Hudson is gonna briefly speak to the economic impact of the project.
Hey, good evening, counsel. Tyler Hudson, four hundred North Ashley Drive. Um, these rezoning hearings typically focus, for, for good reason, on what the property owner is getting. Um, and after all, that's, that's why we're here, because we have requested this rezoning. But for a project of this, this ambition, uh, this magnitude, I think it's important to, to not lose sight of what the city is getting in return. Uh, that the seven of you know, perhaps better than anyone, of the gap between the city's wants, uh, and sort of the city's financial resources, uh, you, you hear about them every day from your constituents. One of the ways we close that gap, particularly in this economically uncertain time with the pandemic, is to boost out of the law on property tax collections. Uh, so let's talk numbers. Uh, last year, the property owner for this site paid, uh, a little over ninety-four thousand dollars in property taxes. This year, they'll pay a hundred and thirty-four thousand due to the increase due to the purchase. Uh, at phase two, once this project is fully completed with both buildings, uh, the, uh, the estimated assessed value, uh, will be at minimum three hundred million dollars. Just to be clear, related, and they can speak about this, believe that, uh, the sales will actually be four hundred million dollars between the two projects. So at three hundred million dollars of an assessed valuation, which we believe is very conservative, the city alone, this isn't all property taxes, this is just the city share on an annual basis would receive a little bit over one point eight million dollars. Uh, when the first phase of this project is completed in twenty twenty-three, we expect probably half that to be available on, again, an annual basis. Um, in your supplemental memo, we included a snapshot of some of the things that one point eight million dollars per year could go towards, but certainly, uh, off the top of your heads, I know that many of you probably have a few things in mind. Uh, this project is a, an opportunity for the entire city to benefit from Related's investment. Um, and, and again, while we're focused on what the applicant is, is asking for, let's not lose sight of the, the dividends that will be paid to the city in return. Uh, with that, Tru, it's gonna talk about some other project improvements that are gonna resonate beyond the footprint as well.
Thank you again, Tru Gardner, four hundred North Ashley Drive. Before turning things over to Mike and Bernardo, I wanted to point out things that really speak to the approach that has been taken with respect to this project. Uh, first, with regard to neighborhood outreach, it has been ongoing and consistent over the last nine months. Even with the pandemic, we have had dozens, if not hundreds, of meetings and calls with neighbors and neighborhood stakeholders. Finally, Related has really gone the extra mile to make this project one that will benefit the entire community. Um, what you're seeing on your screen now is with, um, deals with pedestrian safety. This is Santiago Street. On the left is the current form of it. And on the right shows Related and Architect Tonica's vision to really make it a grand pedestrian boulevard, wide sidewalks, uh, shaded with canopy trees. So that's one on the, on the pedestrian safety side, which we heard from the neighbors is about most important. And, and, uh, next, with respect to, this is the grand entry of the project. Again, looking down Santiago to your left of the screen, you can see Bay Shore, but Related is committing at least one million dollars in public art. You can see on the right side of the entry is one of the, uh, public art installations on the site plan, you'll note dotted throughout our other public art, uh, locations for the, for the development. And then finally, and perhaps most creatively, Related and its architects are committed to completely transforming the Expressway underpass to a beautiful, uh, urban park. Uh, what you see on top, which is really a travesty, is what Expressway Authority, uh, underpass currently looks like. And then below, uh, quite creatively, is what the architects have come out to really transform that into a walkable urban park. So with that, I'll turn things over to, to Mike Hammond with Related.
Good evening, gentlemen. Um, my name is Mike Hammond, I'm senior vice president with the Related Group. I'm also the lead developer on, on this development. Related Group is a privately owned company founded in nineteen seventy-nine. The founder and chairman and the current primary owner of the company is George Perez. Related, over its past forty years, has developed close to one hundred thousand residential units. We've developed units ranging from section A, um, subsidized apartments all the way up to luxury condominiums. Our market, it covers the country and, in fact, several countries in Latin America and Mexico. Uh, regarding our experience in Tampa, we have developed or have underdeveloped six market rate developments currently within the city of Tampa. Um, that totals twenty-one hundred and eighty units. That includes the Manor Riverwalk and Town West Shore, which recently completed. We also are active in the city of Tampa with affordable and workforce housing. We have seven developments totaling just over thirteen hundred units that are either under construction, recently completed, or under, under planning. Uh, we most recently, um, completed Mary Bethune Highrise, which is an elderly project with a hundred and fifty units. We're also, uh, have under construction a boulevard at West River. Um, this particular site, we purchased approximately a year and a half ago. It has a hundred and seventy-six garden apartments and just under five acres. Uh, the property is about fifty years old, and it's nearing the end of its economic life. It is a wood frame structure, and it's starting to show its age in a lot of different ways. A lot of structural issues are starting to, um, to appear. So we set out on a vision to redevelop this property, and we wanted to redevelop it to create a new standard for residential, um, living in the city of Tampa. And in order to do that, we needed to hire a world-class architectural firm, which we feel we have with Architect Tonica. We also feel like we've hired one of the best and most creative interior design firms in the country, and that is Meyer Davis out of New York. We've supplemented this team with a lot of local talent. We have the local office of Kimley Horn is our civil engineers. We have a local arborist, and we also have many local, uh, professionals and engineers that are assisting us with this property. Um, Related, as, as, as you're probably aware of, is well-known for our art. The art is one of the things that ties us together, both our, our developments and with the community. And in this case, we've mentioned in our commitment to public art here, we haven't formally committed to what that art will be, and that's typically something we reach out to the local art community to get their input on what, on what we should, um, do. Um, and the last item I really mention is, wanna mention is the fact that we wanted to do something also special here, so we reached out to Ritz Carlton. Ritz Carlton had not done a project in Tampa or even in the Tampa metropolitan area. Uh, their nearest properties were in Sarasota. We brought Ritz Carlton to the property, showed them our market studies, showed them the site, and basically, they fell in love with the site. Um, so we have entered an agreement with Ritz Carlton to both manage the property and to brand the property. And as you know, Ritz Carlton is known for their legendary, legendary and unparalleled service, their, uh, professional and gracious staff, and the fact that they require a high level of construction quality and amenities. So we're very excited about this development, and I thank you in advance for your consideration.
And with that, uh, we need to go virtual to Bernardo Fort Bressia, who's in Miami. Are you there?
Bernardo, you're muted. You have to unmute yourself, sir.
He's still muted? He's muted.
Bernardo, you're muted. Please unmute yourself. We, we can't hear you, we can see you. All right, we can hear you, go ahead, sir.
Okay, sorry. Somebody else got muted. Hello, how are you? Um, good evening. Um, it's an honor for me to be here, uh, to be involved in a project in Tampa. I've always wished I did something there, but I haven't. But I've done work in many places that have led me to understand different locations, different environments. And, uh, this particular site is a very special site because of its waterfront and Hillsborough Bay, and that was an important inspiration for me. Um, I would ask to give you a brief introduction on who we are and, uh, uh, but I'd like first to take you into the, um, into my thinking of this project. Uh, sorry for the opening up here.
With all the different, the water levels. The experience.
Yeah. Yeah, it's good.
All right. You have reached the, uh, the fifteen minute mark as of right now. Mr. Shelby?
There you go. Sorry about that. Um, am I allowed to continue?
Uh, he's going, he has, they have, they have twenty minutes, is that correct?
Okay, okay, go ahead.
I, I know, and also, counsel, just, there are some technical issues. I don't know what sort of latitude, if any, but certainly, it's not the same as it being in chambers.
All right, I'll keep a note of this. All right, go ahead, sir.
I have the pleasure of having worked at many projects, cultural buildings, museums, and, uh, um, and, and many of the life. But one of the aspects of our practice is in, um, in the design of luxury buildings. Um, we've done some of the leading developments, uh, around the world, and, uh, San Francisco, Boston, New York, across Milan, Monaco, uh, Hong Kong, Singapore. We, this is what we do. You see here some of those, uh, projects that we've involved in, even down from you, we're doing in Naples, at Playhouse, in New York, uh, in that town, so we are quite familiar with your, your, your world on the west coast of Florida, which we, we like very much. Um, but when I saw this site, um, we can go ahead, please, onto the, uh, next image, please. Seems to be a delay here. Um, yeah, there we go. Um, uh, this is the site, and what you see here is very consistent with what we had in mind. We were looking to create a green enclave. Those oak, beautiful oak trees, mature trees, and the possibility that that gave us to create a green environment was what we were seeking. And you will see that, um, in the design of the buildings, we were looking to create, um, a design that was inspired in nature. And, uh, our drawings will depict how we got inspired, because we always like to have poetry in our project. Here, you can see in the site plan that the project is comprised of two towers that are set far apart from each other. And in between, we tried to create a long Santiago Boulevard, not only a beautiful oak-lined street, but a street that feels like part of a complex of, of different buildings of different scales, and one of the aspects is that townhouses that are lining the street, that are hiding the garage, and giving it a residential feel. Um, next, please. Inspiration is important, and we looked at the water in Hillsborough Bay and the breezes that are, that, that come from the water. If we looked at the ripples and undulations that the water creates as a way of inspiration, in a way that that water feeling could rise into the building. We also looked at, felt the breeze of the site, and we thought that maybe we could do a building that felt that was being shaped by the winds and the breezes that come from the bay. Uh, with this, we started to create an idea for the building, because we don't like index. Um, we, we don't like buildings that don't have a story to tell. We like something that has some reason to be. Can we advance, please? I don't have control. Um, here you can see the view from the building below. You see the wood surface, and you see the shape of the balconies that are rising like the ripples or like that I mentioned, or as if the wind had blown into the site and created that shape that rises from the ground up to the sky. Next, please. Here you can see the two buildings that I mentioned, the position of the buildings, because it is that street with townhouses that creates the enclave that I mentioned that connects these two towers. And part of that idea was to create two crystalline towers. Towers that felt transparent, that felt light, that, that, that were not solid or heavy, but instead, as they were, they were surrounded by these, um, terraces, almost, uh, verandas that surround the building that give it a sense of depth, so that they're not solid walls, but instead, that there's depth, transparency, and a feeling of lightness to the building. Next, please. I mentioned the streets and the oak trees, and this view is pretty much a very important one, because buildings belong to a neighborhood, and I wanted to create that neighborhood, that enclave, the sense of arrival to a, a place, the sense of place, which is very important. Buildings belong in places, and the place is as important as the building itself. And that is what we were looking for. You can see from the street that it feels like a residential street lined with those townhouses with a garage concealed and invisible from the street. Next, please.
Thank you very much. You, you've reached twenty minutes and thirty seconds.
Okay, sorry about that. Okay, well, then, I, I, I understand. Uh, I think this gives you that general sense of the building and the arrival, the greenery. And we've designed buildings for Ritz, for Mandarin, for St. Regis, that are residential buildings, and we feel that this is very much in the experience of our firm.
Thank you very much.
I had a question, I had a question for the architect, if that's appropriate, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead and ask.
Okay, um, Mr.? Mr. Fort, is it?
That's right.
Okay. So and I'm reading through some of the objections, and specifically from the the building that's the closest, which I believe is the Stovall Building. Are you familiar with that?
Yes.
Okay. Clearly, an architect of your reputation and experience, you want to allow buildings to work with each other, to relate with each other, to not conflict with each other as part of your entire design program. I'm just making an assumption. I don't have an architect degree, but but I would assume that's part of your process.
Yes.
And so, did you have any concerns about the the close proximity of the Stovall to that building? Were you able to mitigate that at all? The proximity of the two buildings? Is there any, was there any other alternative plans that you, you know, that you worked through in terms of? You know, it appears to me perhaps if you had and I'm talking about the primary building on the Bay Shore, not the other one. If you had set that primary building a little bit further back off of the Bay Shore, that there might have been an opportunity to to not be as close to the Stovall. Was that part of your program? Did you wrestle with that?
In fact, that is what we did. Because of the curvature of the site, we had actually the ability to position the building further forward, and we actually pulled it back. Among the reasons that we pulled it back, of course, was that we were not looking to come forward and project dramatically front of a next-door neighbor. The primary views of these buildings are of the bay. And we acknowledged that, and we did do that. In fact, it gave us the opportunity to create a beautiful garden in the front that we have an image that we can show you. And it's in that garden where we placed the original fountain that remained of a previous building that existed on that site. It created an ambiance on that additional setback that we created with that fountain in the front. And actually, there's an image of that that shows you the amount of greenery that we left forward of the building. So we did take that into consideration. We also took into consideration that yes, sorry.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Councilman Goode.
I see we continue to show slides, and in that case, I would ask for a point of privilege and see how much more time the gentleman needs to finish his presentation, since we're doing these slide presentations of the building along with the questions that Dean Field is asking.
Okay, if the gentleman were, how many more slides do you have left in this presentation?
It's you, yes, I think we have the, this is the additional slide that I was missing, sir. I wanted to point out this part that we've created for part of the building. You can see here, looking from the corner, where we have we have preserved that fountain. But I did want to point out that this is an important part of what you were asking me, how do we respond to a situation like this? Precisely, we didn't move the building forward, and we kept that open space, and we gave ourselves enough room for the branches of the oaks along Santiago, so we we reset the building to create a beautiful greenery and keep those beautiful oaks. Now, how do we also react? We create some privacy between buildings by putting those balconies. Balconies are very important privacy shields, because they create a shadow line, but also don't allow people to look at each other vertically and horizontally into windows. Our building, we think, is a very light building, very soft building, and it's it's not an aggressive building, it's a friendly building in its softness and its shape, that we think is compatible with a neighborhood, and I think if anything, will enhance the neighborhood in a very positive way.
Okay, so the only thing that I didn't hear, Mr. Fort, was was there another location, you know, on the site plan that you considered that would have been further away from the Stovall?
Councilman Dingfeller, if you would, true, Gardner here? Can you hear me?
Go ahead. Yeah, we can hear you.
Sure, so I'd like to answer that, so.
Last I checked, you weren't the architect. So you presented your architect. I have a question to him. I'd just like to hear what the answer is, with all due respect.
Sir, we did, of course, I'd be pleased to answer. We did consider many possibilities on where to place this building, and as I mentioned, we could have moved forward towards the point into the corner, and we felt that we were doing the right thing by creating an alignment of the buildings and creating a more clean, pure urban edge along the avenue and to create a gateway into Santiago. We do think we did test many, quite a few alternatives, and we felt that this is what gave us the opportunity to create a neighborhood with townhouses and greenery, a park at the corner. Of course, architects evaluate many alternatives. We think this was the most compatible alternative for the site development with respect to the neighboring buildings.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Gardner.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments from council members?
Can I just ask him one follow-up?
Yes, sir, Councilman Carlson, go ahead.
All right, I know it's gonna be a long night, but since you're out of the floor. Mr. Ford, I've seen your work in many countries from Miami to Singapore, and your buildings are distinctive and, you know, world-renowned. My question is similar to what Mr. Dingfeller asked, is looking at the context of Bay Shore Boulevard, if you stood out from in the water from Bay Shore and look back, how do you think that this fits into the consistency of the look and feel of Bay Shore?
I think this building will be probably the least solid building along that road, I'd say. It would be the lightest and the most transparent and the most lighted, and I think it'll have a very good feeling for the neighborhood. I think it will it is one that has a nautical feel. I think that's what it belongs in that neighborhood next to the water. And I think it will be an enhancement for the neighborhood. I truly believe that it will improve the neighborhood, it would enhance values, and I think that the level of luxury that Related puts into their projects, I've done many projects with them, which have always been successful and have made neighborhoods. And neighborhoods that previously were already established, but there's always one step forward that can exist for every neighborhood, and they've always taken that step forward. I think that their emphasis on art is a very important one, but also in the quality of the buildings. And I think that bringing Ritz Carlton into the mix, I've worked with Ritz Carlton before. And I've seen what Ritz Carlton does in the branding of the building is also the branding of the neighborhood. I do think this building will be sort of a next step of evolution of this neighborhood.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a request of council. If you have any questions for any of the petitioners, the petitioners who've spoken, Mr. Gardner, I ask that you do that now, but I ask that you do it in the form of questions and not statements. I ask that you refrain from making any judgments until you hear the entirety of the evidence at the hearing, and you don't make any conclusory statements in advance of making your decision at the end of the hearing when you have a motion or a potential motion on the floor. So I ask you just to be able to follow that procedure. And if you have no further questions, then I believe it's the opportune time to move on.
Any other questions? Hearing none. We will now move on to the other gentleman that had logged in before, Mr. Vaca, correct, who has requested that additional time and to be split with a Dr. Gross, I believe. Mr. Vaca, if you could turn your camera on, or if you can, there you go. And your microphone as well.
Is that better?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Thank you. And thank you to all the council for allowing me to appear. Again, my name is George Vaca. I'm kind of in a very unique position tonight. I am a resident of the Stovall. I am president of the association, and I also am a lawyer and have been in Tampa for thirty-seven years, although I've never had the privilege of appearing before you. I think it's important for the council to know that we do not, as a group, oppose development of the property next to us. We just oppose this plan. We have had discussions with the developers lobbyists, the Ballard people. They came and talked to us in March. They sat with the board before COVID. They were very pleasant, and as you might expect, after the meeting, our board had several questions for them. And so through our management company and the manager, we sent questions and we put into the record for you to look at the series of emails that went back and forth in which we asserted our questions and eventually got some answers, but not really to our satisfaction. We asked about parking, and they told us it was going from two hundred and twenty-five spaces to three ninety-three, but then told you all and the city that somehow the daily trips would decrease, notwithstanding the fact that the number of vehicles were being almost doubled on-site. We asked if they did a financial impact evaluation to determine any detrimental fluctuation of land values to adjacent property. The answer that we got was, we believe, not evidence, but we believe that the adjacent land would increase in value because of the proximity to a Ritz-branded property. And then they provided us with the same projection of ad valorem revenue taxes that they provided you again tonight. We expressed our concern that there was only a seven-foot setback and that the buildings would face one another only forty-three feet apart. The response to that was, sorry, we can't move the building. We also expressed our concerns about pile driving, noise, dirt, and dirt mitigation and the like. The response was only to admit that they thought they might use or consider piles as a construction method or technique. We had asked our association lawyer to reach out to Mr. Gardner in an effort to have a discussion about our concerns. And I guess I should have expected this, because when you get a lawyer letter, the typical response is to get one back, and that's exactly what we did. So we are here opposing this rezoning, because we really don't have any other choice. As I understand it, and I'm not a land use lawyer, but as I understand it, the burden to convince the city to rezone is on them. And the site plan that they submitted has already been determined to be inconsistent and deficient by the city's own staff. So the only way that they can come and get this rezoning is to then also have you allow them to have the waivers. And at least, again, to my understanding. And I just wanted to point out that Section twenty-seven, one thirty-six has nine different requirements. Four of those requirements, we strenuously object to what you've been told by the developer and the conclusions of the city staff. In particular, numbers one, two, five, and six, all of which require you to consider potential adverse impacts to onsite natural elements surrounding impacted neighborhoods, compatibility with site design and scale external to the project, maximize the preservation of natural resources, including wooded areas, and consider whether this development is appropriate, considering the location character and compatibility with the surrounding impacted neighborhoods. We submit that seven-feet setback and forty-three feet does not satisfy these requirements when looking at the impacted neighbor. Now, I've spent a fair amount of time trying to familiarize myself with this area, and I noticed that generally throughout the code and all the different code designations, it recognizes that as buildings get higher, as the height of the buildings grow, so generally do the setbacks. This particular building does precisely the opposite. I believe it is going to be either the tallest or certainly one of the tallest buildings on Bay Shore at three hundred and twenty-eight feet. Yet the distance between the towers, the two condo towers, will be the smallest of any on Bay Shore. And I'd ask the clerk right now if they could play the Bay Shore condo video. So this is a video that was taken by drone within the last week or so. And it has electronically measured the distances between the condo towers that appear on Bay Shore Boulevard. As you, this goes, starts from basically Howard or just north of Howard and goes to the most southern of the condominiums on Bay Shore. And I believe that you'll see that, for the most part, the distances between these condo towers range anywhere from several hundred feet to ninety-one feet. And I think at this point, once we get done with this particular video, I'd like to temporarily turn it over to Dr. Gross, who's prepared more of a detailed presentation pertaining to the distances between the buildings and the lack of compatibility of the proposed building to these distances. Steve?
Has Mr. Gross been sworn in, Madam Clerk?
No, he hasn't.
Okay, if we can stop the clock, then, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, we've stopped the clock.
Mr. Gross was locked on. I do not see him on right now. Hold on.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, sir. Go ahead.
Is your camera there?
I'm trying to determine that right now. Hold on, please. I can't seem to get it turned on. I'm very sorry, sirs. Somehow I can't get the camera turned on. I can get my computer, my computer won't give access to the webcam. It's a privacy issue of some sort. I've tried several times. I apologize. Let me see if I can do it right now. Let me see if this gives it.
It's important, sir, for the purposes of this hearing.
I understand. I'm trying my best, but my computer is simply not being cooperative and not giving access to the webcam for some reason through this particular program. And I don't know. Can you, I'm sorry, I'm on web programs all the time, and I just can't get this camera to actuate for some reason. My wife is gonna sign on on her computer and try and get her webcam, webcam to work, but I can't seem to get it to work. I'm happy to swear in. I try and share my screen, but I can't seem to get the webcam to allow me, due to privacy issues on the computer, to give me access to the webcam. I apologize.
The clerk has your PowerPoint. I don't know if you can simultaneously see it or do whatever while she's.
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to, thank you very much. That's great.
But that's not, sir, that, but you can't, you cannot testify to it. You cannot offer evidence to it until the clerk. until, until the clerk scares you and.
My wife, sir, all I can say is my wife has signed in on her computer and I'm happy to go to her computer and offer testimony.
Madam Clerk, can you bring her forward?
Julia Winston.
Okay. What is the first name? I'm sorry.
Julia Winston. W I N S T O N. The email address is jaywinston@tampaDSL.net.
I do not see that.
Oh yeah, she's claimed to be.
Okay, I see. Hold on.
Be here now. Sorry about this, team. Apologize. Technology.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
We have to see you.
Okay, we're on.
There we go.
Ms. Winston, Ms. Winston, why don't you switch places with?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. My apologies, team.
All right, I'm gonna start the clock back up. He's not, he's not sworn in yet, Matt, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm you would tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I'm gonna start the clock now. Go ahead.
PowerPoint, please.
Okay, we see it.
Good evening. Good evening, council members. Thank you for staying late. I appreciate it. I'm a owner of the 601 unit in the Stovall and a member of the condo board. And I've lived in Tampa for 28 years. I'm a physician, was at University of South Florida, and I'd like to present some information to you regarding the structures on Bay Shore. So if you would go to the next two, next slide and then the next one, please. And the next one, we're going to go south to north along Bay Shore. And this is similar to the video that was shown. So what I did here is I used Google Earth to assess the distances using the Google Earth tool between the towers. The towers represent an important element along Bay Shore. This is the Bellamy Pinnacle and Bay Shore Towers. And you can see that the distance is 130 and 160 feet with ample space between the buildings. Next, please. This is the Alagon Canterbury Regency Tower spacing. You can see 147 feet and 161 feet between the towers. Next, please. This is the barrage in Regency. Now, there was no barrage image available because it's a new development. So what I did here was take a photograph showing the spacing between the two towers and then utilized Google Earth to measure the distance between the property lines. And you can see that it's approximately 91 feet, similar to what was shown in the video. Next. This is the Sanctuary, a very new structure that was just recently built as well, and it's still in construction. And you can see the Sanctuary to the Diplomat is 150 feet. Next. This is the atrium tower to Harbor House, 264 feet distance between the towers. Next. You can see all along North Bay Shore, if you look at the three, four, five building to the structures, there's a huge space between the towers all along Bay Shore. Next. We found it interesting. We looked at the related groups own rental structure on the Hillsborough River. And we looked at the towers coming out of the structure itself. There were three towers that emanate from the structure and face the Hillsborough River. And if you measure the distances between those towers, they're 90 feet. Next. This is the Monte Carlo, next, next to our building, and the towers that jut out from it have a distance of 124 feet. Next. Now, we looked at Harbor Island. Harbor Island is not Bay Shore. It's actually a higher density area. And we measured the distance between two, three, and three structures, the tall towers on there. And you can see the distance measured is 90 feet between that structure. Next. And 65 feet between the next two structures. So the, even in the high density area of Harbor Island, you can see that the distance between the towers is 65 feet as opposed to what we, what we are seeing is a 43 foot distance between the proposed tower of, of the related group. Next. Next. So here's a picture of the proposed tower, a rendering that was sent to us and is published in public record of the Related Groups Tower. And I want you to take note of the incredible closeness and proximity of the proposed tower to our building, the Stovall, and less than 50, approximately 50% of what the current standard, the minimum standard is for the tower distances on Bay Shore. Next. And here's just a comparison that you can see. Here are the, the spacings of the, from the three built, three towers in South Bay Shore. And you can see the distance, the difference between the spacings of those towers and the proposed tower here, quite a bit different. Next. If you look at the current site plan, furthermore, I appreciate the architect's discussion and I appreciate his expertise in the beautiful structures he designed. But I beg to differ on some of the issues here. If you look at the pink here, you'll see that's the, the structure of the building that's proposed. The gray below it is the Stovall with the red hour pointing between it. And you can see that the way they positioned their building is directly adjacent to our building. And we did an analysis and looked at the structure of the property itself. And simply by moving their structure more westerly, they can open up the entire area there with, by simply eliminating one townhouse and open up the entire structure, although it's still too close to us in our opinion. Next. I'm an ophthalmologist by training and I work with visual angles all the time. So I took a picture of the aquatica from our 601 building and you can see it on the left side. And then I did, using visual angles, I approximated what the, what the aquatica would look like if it were 43 to 43 feet away from us. And you can see that the, from a privacy point of view, you can see right into those apartments adjacent to us. And we wonder why anybody would even want to do it from the opposite side. In other words, why would people from the, from their proposed tower want to have such a proximity to us? Next. So in summary, we, in the Stovall, do not oppose all development on Bay Shore. We realize that that's a necessary process. However, the inter-tower distance between the Stovall and the proposed Related Group high-rise is far too small and completely out of character to Bay Shore. We suggest a redesign to more appropriately place the new tower on the existing site with inter-tower distances to approximate the current character of Bay Shore in the range of 90 to 95 feet. And as good neighbors, place the wall on the property to allow views downtown Tampa from the Stovall's northeastern windows. Currently, the way the structure is placed, the only view we have is from our balcony. All of the other windows are completely blocked. So we think it's out of character to the current structure and we think it's unneighborly. And I'm going to turn it back over to George for the remainder of the presentation. And I thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you very much, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Vaca.
I started talking about waivers. And so since the rezoning is dependent on waivers, when considering the waiver, I understand that it's up to the petitioners to have to demonstrate that if granted, it will not substantially interfere or injure the rights of others who would be affected by the accommodation of the waiver. Their response to, the response that they gave to you, the supplemental response, does not contain any evidence, much less competent substantial evidence to show that the Stovall will not be injured or our rights not substantially interfered with by the placement of that building. Video two, please, which is the 42 foot from the Stovall, please. So this is another drone video. This is, this is shot from, I made a mistake. I thought it was 42. It's 43 feet. But that's exactly what their residents are going to be looking into. And if you pay close attention as you're seeing the videos, I had given the residents a heads up and said, hey, if you don't want your unit to be looked into, please close your, your drapes. But you can see, for instance, in that picture right there, the drapes are open and you can certainly see into the, the unit. Let's go do the third one, which is the same video but shot on the way down. Please. Now, we didn't receive any information from Related or any views from their buildings looking south. And I suggested you, there's a very good reason for that because that's what they would have had to have dealt with. Mr. Fort said that the design of his building would not impact on privacy. I frankly, with all due respect, he's the expert, but I have a hard time disbelieving what my own eyes show. And here we are. This is, I believe this to be the fifth floor and you can clearly see right inside the unit.
Which, thank you very much, sir. You've reached the time limit.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Could I, could I ask council for just another minute in light of the length of the, of the petitioner's presentation?
Council members, how do you feel about that? One more minute.
I'll give it to him, Mr. Chair.
Do we have a second to that?
I'll second.
Second from Councilman Moran. Is there any objection to giving one additional minute, a strict extra minute?
If I may, I want to hear if the petitioner wishes to speak to that or shall it just? If they won't, if they would just be. Well, they can, certainly it can affect their, their time during rebuttal, but I'm talking about with regard to objection to that request.
True, Gardner, we have no problem granting an additional minute to Mr. Vaca.
All right. Hearing no objection by unanimous consent, we go with another minute. You may begin, sir.
Thank you very much. I think everybody on council knows Bay Shore and its surrounding neighborhoods are absolutely unique to Tampa. The homes and the condominiums have been compatible for almost the entire time that I've lived here, which is nearly 40 years. We have no other high-rise towers on Bay Shore that are so close to one another. We don't have any other high-rise towers that are so close to one another anywhere in Tampa. There are many places you can compare. You know, Miami being a prime example, where location of towers are at a greater density than they've ever been in Tampa. That results in a different field. That results, that density results in a different neighborhood. Having that density on Bay Shore would alter Bay Shore's unique style and feeling.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions from council, any comments at this time before we go to public comment?
Questions for Mr. Vaca?
Councilman Goode, questions to Mr. Vaca.
So Mr. Vaca is speaking for the Association at the Stovall, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Sorry, I was trying to get my, my webcam back on.
From what I'm hearing, the only really opposition to this proposal is the distance of your condominium to a proposed new building. That's correct, sir?
That is our primary objection. Yes, sir.
That's the primary, primary objection, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or, or com, or questions at this time? If not, we will go to public comment. Mr. Shelby, I heard that there was one person at the convention center. Can we take, get that out of the way since it's just one? All right, at the convention center, we have one person, I believe.
This is Eileen Rosati with Planning and Development. And I have one person here to speak on behalf of this item.
Okay.
Sworn in. Thank you.
You have been sworn in. Very good. The individual, if you could please state your name, you have three minutes to speak.
Hi, my name is, my name is Frank Grabowski. I'm the president of Bay Shore Gardens Neighborhood Association. For the past months, we, I have fielded many calls from the neighborhood, from the residents that are beginning to pick up on the news of this development. They've asked for a lot of information. They voiced a lot of concerns. Key word in my statement is beginning. You've been told of widespread communication and support. I don't think that we're there from my perspective by a long shot. It's very obvious that the neighborhood knows very little of this project and its, its six-year impact. Communication to the neighborhood is very difficult. Out of several thousand residents, our mailing list is just 200. Out of that 200, only 25 people were on the Zoom call that Related had with our neighborhood. And a fifth of them were the PR people of the Related Groups, group itself. The truth is, we just don't have a good way to even be able to reach the residents. Don't have the time, money, lobbyists and attorneys that we're up against on the other side. We have day jobs. So this is not exactly a fair fight. What we have is a good councilman and hopefully full council support that's taking into consideration that those on this side need a better voice for such a high-impact development. As Mr. Vaca had said, our neighborhood is not opposed to the progress either. We're in favor of careful, fully vetted progress with thorough input from those that are affected the most. We ask for time. We ask for better communication of real forums with true discussion and compromise. Therefore, for the moment, we ask that this back off and we be able to revisit a very aggressive plan that's going to affect a lot of people in, in very major ways. It's a six-year project. We've lost Fred Ballpark to a great degree from the building of the Sanctuary. And it's hard to imagine what takes place over these coming six years on such a major, major project. Please give us better consideration, more time to voice our opinions from those affected the most. Thank you.
If I may, sir, just to confirm for the record, sir, you have been sworn in. Is that correct? Because it was garbled when I heard.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, that, is there anybody else at the convention center or is that it? Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, we have registered speakers. Do you have a number as to how many are logged in and registered and ready to go?
I still have approximately about 27 that's still logged on.
Okay, very good. We will begin. I will keep time, as I have been keeping time. Three minutes for each speaker. I ask that they please state their name. Of course, we have them registered, but just for the record, and when you'd like to begin, let's go.
If I can, Mr. Chairman, just a reminder to those who are logged in and registered that if it is your intention to not speak, the alternative means of watching this are available on Spectrum and Frontier and on City Channel on tampa.gov.net/live. So if, as we discussed at the beginning of this hearing, if it is your intention to not speak and you have that opportunity to please log out of this platform, so it will move things along a lot quicker. And I won't have to say this again, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's be.
And, Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Should we remind people that to try not to be redundant and that they don't have to use all three of their minutes?
Very good. Thank you, sir. All right, let's begin with public comment.
All right, I pulled five public comment speakers over. That is Dipa Shaw, Allison Date, Carter McCain, and Cesar Hernandez. If you could unmute yourself and turn on your cameras.
You're on.
Hello, this is Carter McCain, one of the five.
Okay, moment.
Hi, this is Dipa.
Allison Date.
Dipa, do you have your? Dipa, do you have your camera on?
I thought I did.
We don't see you yet.
I see Ms. Date, but I don't see Mr. McCain. I see a portion of a desktop.
Yes.
I don't see him. No, I don't, we don't see you, sir.
Okay.
Turn the camera around.
Do you see me now?
We see Allison. We do not see Carter. We, your camera's on, but it's pointing at the computer screen. We see Caesar.
I'm letting my techno lawyer wife figure it out.
You just have to turn the camera on. Dipa, we see you.
Mr. Chairman, we could swear in the three and let Mr. McCain work on his while.
Okay, Mr. McCain, you just have to turn the camera towards you, because it's on. Go on.
Keep going.
All right, we see, pull it, pull it up.
How about that?
All right, please raise your right hand and we'll swear you in.
Do you swear, do you swear affirm that you would tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
All right, we're going to begin. I'll go in order of what I see here. Caesar Hernandez, from left to right, go ahead, sir.
They can't see my head.
Yes, sir. Good evening, council members. For the record, my name's Caesar Hernandez, nine fifteen North Franklin Street, Tampa, Florida, three-three-six-zero-two. I am also the president of the Tampa Bay Latin Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here to strongly support this project. Strongly feel that Tampa's a city on the rise. It would really position the city as a forward-thinking city. And also, it's a game changer for the economic development in and around the area, not just within the city limits, but in general, within the region. I love this city, and I think for us to be competitive, we have to compete globally. And it's time for us not to be compared with the likes of Sheboygan or even smaller-tier cities, but to start competing with the Singapores, the Londons, and the New Yorks of the world. And I believe that having a partnership with companies like the Related Group and a brand like Ritz-Carlton in, within the city limits is a tremendous win for us. We just delivered a Stanley Cup. We're known as City of Champions, and we're looking forward to having a city council deliver a win for us here and for the citizens of our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. McCain?
Hello, I'm Carter McCain. My wife and I live approximately three hundred yards due north of the project. We're both attorneys. I've been a land use attorney here in Tampa for a little over thirty-two years, and I am here to speak in strong support of the project as a neighbor. Also, I'd like to say I respect the comments of Mr. Robowski. I was a participant on the neighborhood conference call approximately three or four months ago, which I asked to take all the questions, all the comments, and I would go back to the developer and see what answers I could get. Not a single question was brought back to me about the project at that time. This is a world-class project. I've lived in Tampa since nineteen eighty-eight, when I got out of law school. I've lived in the zip code for decades. And to have a world-class brand like Ritz-Carlton and a world-class developer that we have will be great for the city of Tampa. As I think everyone said tonight, is the Bay Oaks project is going to be redeveloped. It is end of its natural lifespan. And this is a great design. I respect the comments from Mr. Vaca, who I also know personally. And I, my wife and I also looked at buying a place in that very development. But this is something that Tampa needs to have. We don't have any increase in density at this project. We go from one seventy-five to one eighty. The traffic studies show less traffic. You have natural compatibility with two multifamily developments on each side of this bordered by the crosstown and Bay Shore. It just makes sense with the right people that are involved. And so I would encourage council members, and we appreciate your time into this late evening, to really think about how important this is to take Tampa to the next level. From our neighbors who we talk to in Fred Ballpark on a daily basis, and the many people we talk with around the neighborhood, I've only had one verbal objection that have come to me in the last four months. Everyone else has been either neutral or supportive, and I would request you consider the importance of this project to the city of Tampa's future.
Thank you very much, sir. All right, Allison Date, you're next.
Good evening. I'm Allison Date, two-four-zero-three, West Chicago, three-three-six-two-nine. I'm here representing, I'm a part of the Bay Shore Gardens Neighborhood Association and also Sierra Club. And I got quite intimate with the trees on that area. I took a lot of pictures. I measured all the trees, even though I wasn't quite sure what I was doing. But I was pleased to learn the other day from one of the foresters that the, that there's so much interest by the group, it's the development group, that they're going to protect the trees. But we this, the Sierra Club person that I worked with, we were, we sent in some information about some trees that we thought might be able to be saved because they're around the edge of the development or they're near the two grand trees that were going to be saved. And so we have a list of those, and I think I gave them to the city council, but I, I don't know how to give them to the developers. And then there, there is also, and we didn't hear from the arborist, but they had a tree map, a survey of all the trees. And so we used that. And there, the trees that we suggested that the developer try to preserve were around the edges or near the front or the back. So, or near the, the grand trees. So I don't know if it's worth me saying the number of the trees, or if somebody has that information that they could share. Does anybody have anything to say about that, or should I list the trees? We're trying to save you time here.
No, you have another minute and five seconds if you'd like to go on.
One of the trees is number forty-two. It's near the border of the back entrance, near MacDill. The other tree is number four-hundred, which is right near the, the grand tree, which is grand tree fifty-five. And there's a few along the southern property border, sixty-five, seventy-four, and one-oh-two. And near Bay Shore, there's tree number one-thirty-two, which is quite near the grand, grand oak or grand laurel. That's one, one-twenty-four. And I also had, but it looked like some of those were actually going to be saved. I don't know if they are or not, but it, there are a lot of trees and we need a lot of trees, so thank you for including so many in your design.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. If you can save any of those, we would appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. Dipa Shaw?
Hi. Thank you for the opportunity and thank you for the wonderful presentation. I am new to the neighborhood. I'm, well, depending on which address you want to go with, twenty-nine-hundred West Beta Bay or three-thousand and one Bay Shore Boulevard. I'm, like I said, I'm new. We just moved in in June, so I appreciate the opportunity to get this presentation. I had not had an opportunity to speak directly to the Related Group due to all the COVID challenges. I really do appreciate and value what the proposal is for Santiago. The road is it's difficult right now to be a pedestrian on that road, and the sidewalks and the trees will really make it much more beautiful. I want to just make sure that, I'm not sure where I lie on the, in my forward or against it, because there are going to be certain challenges as a homeowner. Everything from views as well as access for ingress and egress, which I, seems that it's not going to be an issue. And then I encourage the Related Group to continue keeping the community up to date as to what may vary from what the proposal and the plans are that are being presented today. I do think that it's going to be a beautiful addition to the area and just as long as we're cooperative and working through the challenges.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, Madam Clark, the next number of speakers?
Yes, the next speakers we have are Paula Wilson, Nancy Walker, Sally D., John Ranon, and Debbie Lundberg. If you can mute yourself and turn on your video.
Mr. Shelby, Mr. Chairman, just a point of, a point of order, just a question before people start speaking again. I think it'd be helpful for us and for the record, and some of the people have done it in terms of telling what their involvement is. In other words, if you're a neighbor, tell us you're a neighbor. If you're with Bay Shore Gardens, tell us you're with Bay Shore Gardens. If you have a relationship to the project in any way, I think it's important to be able to disclose that so the record's clear and so we have an understanding as well. I don't know how you feel about that, Mr. Shelby, but.
I can go about that by reading a rule of council's rules of procedure that all persons who provide testimony, information, or opinion regarding a petition in a quasi-judicial matter pending before city council must disclose any direct or indirect business or personal interest between themselves and the petitioner or applicant which is requesting action. This information shall not be used to deny the petition or matter, but goes to the weight of the evidence, information, or opinion provided. So that is a fair question to be asked if they don't identify that. You can specifically ask them that question, and certainly they should disclose that if that is the case per council's rules of procedure. Does that answer your question, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Shelby. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, also would be helpful if somebody mentions an organization, if they say if they're officially representing the organization, if they're just a member of it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And one last thing, you both raised good questions, but they're all questions that you can direct to any speaker if you need to know the answer, and certainly if it's relevant to your decision. And again, you don't go to a basis to deny it, but certainly could go to the weight you give it. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Chair, I do want to note that I have sent several requests for Paula Wilson to turn on her video. She has not done so yet, and I also pulled another public speaker over, which is Casey Cathy. And she hasn't turned on her video either, so we could proceed with, what, hold on, here's Casey.
All right, I see Casey Cathy and or others. All right, please raise your right hand, we're going to swear you in.
Do you swear affirm you would tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I'm going to go in order of how I see it on my screen. Mr. Ranion, if you'd like to begin.
No, thank you. My name is John Ranion. The address is twenty-three oh-six North Howard Avenue, Tampa, three-three-six oh-seven. I represent the Centro Español of Tampa as its president. And I'm here primarily because of a historical interest, if you will. The property that is the subject of this petition was the home of a stately building which housed Tampa's first modern hospital that was constructed by the Centro Español between nineteen oh-four and nineteen oh-six. And for six decades, it served our family, our, our members and our families with their health care needs. Sadly, that structure is no longer present on the property, but as fate would have it, one historical artifact survives. Excuse me, survived the wrecking ball and our ornate fountain that holds special memories for people of a certain age, myself included. When we made the Related Group aware of this, they enthusiastically embraced the idea of preserving the fountain and incorporating it into its design. As I wrote in my letter of support, the preservation of historical, historical artifacts may occur more frequently than it does in the past, but it's never a sure thing. And so I and we, the Centro Español, appreciate the spirit and the intent of the Related Group to preserve a part of Tampa's story. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Next up, Debbie Lundberg. Go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you, City Council, Debbie Lundberg, forty-six, twenty-one, West Beta Bay Boulevard here in Tampa, three-three-six-two-nine. I'm an interested citizen who lives very close to the proposed project. And I get to travel for work and for pleasure. And what I've found is, all over the country, people think of Tampa as someplace nice. We know it's outstanding and wonderful. And if we have something like the Ritz-Carlton condominium project, it will be part of elevating Tampa the way that we know it deserves to be seen. So Tampa's a terrific community. Yet there are some missing pieces, and so the Ritz-Carlton condominium project can position Tampa as a global part of the community that we represent and where others will find it desirable. So such a living space, I'm supportive of because this just punctuates items and areas like Water Street that we know are really driving the economy and interest for people who, who want to live here. So I'm sure everyone on this very long meeting can agree that we want the best and the brightest here in Tampa because we love it here. And best and brightest like things like this, the opportunity to be in a place like the Ritz-Carlton. So this project is something that can bring the Ritz brand here to Tampa. And if we reject it, we may be sending a message that we're not quite open for business the way we want people to think we are. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, Nancy Walker.
Good evening. Good evening, Chairman and council members. Appreciate the time on what will be a long evening to spend a couple of minutes on my thoughts. The Nancy Walker, twenty-nine-hundred West Julia Street, Tampa, Florida, three-three-six-two-nine. In response to council's request, I do own a marketing firm, and I am employed, directly employed, working with the Related Group on this project. I also have been working on real estate development for thirty years in the Tampa area, and I've had a lot, a lot of time to work with good and bad developers. And I wanted to express my support for the proposed rezoning of the Related Group. I've lived in Tampa for thirty years, approximately a mile from the site, in a single-family home. My husband and I recently downsized from that home, and not wanting to leave the neighborhood, we moved into the Varage condominium on Bay Shore just south of the site. What I've come to appreciate even more, as I enjoy Bay Shore, is my front door and from my balcony, is that this iconic boulevard is not only alive and spectacular when you're on it, but offers the most magnificent example of Tampa Bay at its finest at every hour of the day and night. And I've just really come to appreciate that the, that Bay Shore now is really not just for those of us that call it home and have an address on it, but that it really belongs to everybody in the community and the appreciation of what value Bay Shore brings to our city and for the developers that are able to develop on it and for council to make decisions about what to move forward is even more paramount because it is such an iconic street. And I think with this ownership, that we also inherit the responsibility to see that it's cared for and valued and supported by all that it's meant to be for the betterment of all in Tampa, and simply is not intended to be wholly owned by those of us who live on its edge. I believe we're beyond fortunate that Bay Oaks property was purchased by the Related Group. As many of you have said, their example of responsible development within our state and within our great city has brought improvement to quality of life with each residential community that they have brought to life. And I believe the thoughtful redevelopment site plan and the design that you're evaluating tonight is one of the most impressive representations of their talent and the world-class team that they brought to the project. That this property will be co-branded with one of the most globally recognized quality brands known will provide Tampa with one of the most impressive residential jewels in our city, and I can't think of a better location for it to rise. So even though the opposition demonstrates what I believe is a very real concern, I believe in the scheme of things that it is, in some regards, a narrow point of view for all that the whole entire project offers to the city and, and for, that they also And, and for, that, that they also, as a maj- majority, as a minority of the stewards, were all responsible for the success of the boulevard. So I urge you to vote yes to the project and to allow our iconic Bay Shore to continue to be all that it can and all that it should be. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sally. You're muted. Sally D. is muted.
Sally, click on your mic and unmute yourself.
All right. We'll give it a moment. We'll go to K- Casey Cathy and then we'll come back to Sally. Casey, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Casey Cathy. I live at 3106 West Dunwoody. So right down the street from this project. And I was lucky enough to grow up right here in South Tampa. In fact, I went to school down the street from the side of this proposed building. But then I left for several years. And during that time, I lived in several major world capitals. Then I was really doubly lucky and I was able to come back. And I am so proud of the development that's happened in Tampa and the growth that I've watched happen is we're going from a town to a forward-looking, real city. And this development is a key piece in becoming that world-class city. This development, its vision and its economic impact will attract a worldwide audience. And that means a diverse population. And those are the kind of resources we want to offer our citizens. I'm particularly looking forward to the art strategy that this development company is going to incorporate in this project. And I urge you to vote yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Sally, have you unmuted yourself?
Got it.
All right, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Sally D. and I live at 1803 West Hills Avenue in Tampa, Florida, 33606. And my office is at 3105 West Granada Street, 33629, which is just a stone's throw pretty much from the, from the site, depending on whose arm it is. Anyway, I think that, you know, the related group has proposed a really interesting and exciting project for our town. Obviously, with a brand like the Ritz, it brings a certain amount of prestige to Tampa. And I don't, I think that helps Tampa's brand overall as well. While I know there's concerns by some of the neighbors, I mean, the bottom line is that it's hard to, we're a city, we're an attractive place to live, especially now with COVID. People want to live in more residential cities like ours. And we have a lot to offer. And, you know, another thought is that it doesn't really hurt the tax base either, having a Ritz Carlton and, and the, and the money that can come in from property taxes. So I think it's a win-win for the city. And I think it's in line with what we're seeing on Bay Shore Boulevard right now. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next selection of speakers.
All right, the next selection we have is Anne Langford. Michelle Reyes, Henderson Everett. Mickey Jacob and Dr. Jody Johnson. If you could unmute yourself and turn on your video.
All right, I have four people on my screen. We will begin with Dr. Johnson. Wait, you, please raise your right hands and we're gonna swear you in and unmute yourselves.
Do you swear or affirm you would tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I will.
Yes. Thank you.
All right, Dr. Johnson, you are first. Go ahead.
Hello, everyone on the council. I'm Dr. Jody Johnson of 2906 Spanish Circle, apartment 102, live from Bay Oak. The property up for demolition. One of the things that I feel about this is that the first essential strategy, the first responsibility of the city council is the protection of the residents of the city. Related spoke earlier about telling a story with this development, but let me tell you the most important story about this development. It is the only project I know of in this local area that will involve the active displacement of large numbers of residents. Nobody has mentioned that so far. It's, I do not know how. A number of people will have to move from this area. So despite that talk of community outreach from Related earlier on in this presentation, I had to contact Related to do outreach. My family and other families heard nothing from them. And that was reflected in what Frank Gravoski said earlier on, whenever we have had no real contact with these people, unfortunately. The Tampa Comprehensive Plan, meanwhile, mentioned at several points, one of the focuses for South Tampa is the maintaining of neighborhood stability. I would argue that this project not maintain neighborhood stability. And in fact, it becomes displacement-based and hyper gentrification. It goes from 1 point, well, $1,000 a month apartments and up a little bit to 1.7 to $5 million condos. That is not consistent with the comprehensive plan whenever it comes to maintaining affordable housing within the city. Another really important point I want to make here quickly is that, given South Tampa property prices, less well-off children displaced from this specific property will be displaced from their school zones as well. That's because Hillsborough County Public Schools said to me, so whenever I asked them to do a demographic study of the possible effects on the schoolchildren, they said it was your, I, the city council's responsibility to do that demographic study. I encourage you to commission that study immediately and delay this development until the harm is more precise and detailed against the people who live here. That's the most important thing. I don't care about the Ritz. I care about the people who live here right now. And so Hillsborough County Public Schools, meanwhile, said there's no capacity for the development either. It's clearly in the filings. I've read the filings. It said there's no capacity. It's the plan to remove the poor children from here to replace them with richer ones at Roosevelt. I don't know. I have two stepchildren who will be directly affected by this. I am a professor at USF and I cannot afford this area. Right? If this goes forward, it's ridiculous. And workers, many of them lower class or lower middle class, will be likely forced out of the area. We have police officers here, schoolteachers, nurses, and workers in the service industry. And so those are my particular problems here personally. I know in the number of other groups, including the SEVAL, had said that they had issues as well. But I wanted to bring that up to give you an impact idea about how it's going to impact people like me here, whenever we're going to be displaced for 1.7 and upwards condos. Letting it be a completely different world.
Thank you. Next up, Mickey Jacob.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Council members. My name is Mickey Jacob, 450 Knights Run Avenue, Tampa, 33602. And I've been practicing arch- practicing architecture here in the city for 39 years. This evening, I'm speaking to you as a private citizen in support of the rezoning application for this project. A great city's there to push the envelope of design. It improves the conditions of the urban environment to benefit everyone in the community. I think this project is a great example of how to apply and implement that ideal. Internet renowned related group is bringing, they just Ritz Carlton back to our city in a way that adds a new elegance to our urban environment and what I believe will be one of the jewels of architecture and our community. Building designs by iconic architectural firm Architectonic are world-class structures that connects technology, new materials with function and beauty into buildings that will be a stunning addition to the skyline. Their portfolio of work around the world for decades has set a standard of excellence that honestly, all of us in the architecture profession aspire to achieve. These buildings are no exception to that. What sets this project apart from the norm is the investment by the related group to improve the surrounding streetscape and pedestrian access with new pathways and connections. Creating an interactive green space under the Crosstown Expressway revitalizes a long-deglected eyesore into a beautiful community asset. Proposed ground plane improvements will provide a safer, sustainable, and comfortable means for the neighborhood residents and children to circulate and connect both to Bay Shore Boulevard and McDill Avenue retail corridor. But just as importantly, I strongly believe this project is taking an abandoned and ignored historical element. The only original remaining fountain from the Central Espanol Hospital and revitalize and repurpose it into its original elegance as a building design feature. Related's respect for architectural past and recognition of our cultural heritage makes us a unique and thoughtful addition to the community. Simply stated, this project will improve the quality of life for the surrounding neighborhoods, which will benefit our citizens for decades to come. It will make the streetscape interactive and safe. It's going to connect neighborhoods and enhance the opportunity for citizens to experience the social interactions that allow it to thrive. It respects our history and our heritage while adding beauty and elegance to our skyline. It will provide a dynamic environment, vibrant new living option through design excellence. I'm in full support of this project and I ask you all do the same by voting in favor of this application. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Michelle Reyes.
Mr. Chairman, I had a question for Mr. Jacob.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Mickey, you're a respected architect in this town and you probably worked on some of these other high-rises along the Bay Shore. The did you, did you see the demonstration that was, that was given earlier about the distances between the various buildings?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Assuming that it's true, I don't, I don't have my tape measure with me, but assuming that it's true that, that these two buildings are gonna be 43 feet apart, does that concern you as, as an architect? Especially when it's on a fairly, you know, fairly large piece of land. You know, that there might have been more flexibility to, to spread those, to spread the new building a, a little bit further away from these existing stone wall. And then my, my last question to you, Mickey, and don't, don't take this in any negative way, but just for the record. Have you, are you doing any projects with Related or with anybody else who's here tonight?
Okay, so to answer your last question first, Councilman, no, I am not under contract nor do I have a business relationship with the group at all. The, the, your question about the differential in distance, if it's 43 feet or whatever it is, I'm concerned because the overall project mitigates the, I think that, the way the groundscape is, is treated. How the, the parking garage really connected down into the neighborhood level. So for me, this building becomes a groundscape thing. And I'm not as concerned as the buildings being close and issues with views because this is urban environment. And we have a vertical element along Bay Shore. That's part of what Bay Shore is. And I believe that Bernardo and his team have thought that through. And their design, I think, is sensitive to that from a privacy standpoint, based on what he said on how that's designed with the setbacks because of the way the balconies act. So I believe that the design in and of itself as a whole is a very good design for the site.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. All right, next speaker is Michelle Reyes. You may begin.
Good evening, Council members. Thank you for your time this evening. I'm coming to you in support of the project as a Tampa resident, as someone who's born and raised in Tampa. I've gone to school just down the street from the project and it's extremely exciting and promising to watch how much city, the city continues to grow up and just evolve around us. I think having a top developer like Related investing in not only the Bay Shore neighborhood, but into our city as a whole is so important for the future of Tampa. I think this being their sixth project in the city really shows their commitment to us and their plan for the additional improvements in the neighborhood like the tree preservation, like the larger sidewalks, the public arts, the public space underneath the underpass. It shows the time, thought, the care that they put into their projects. And it shows that the, the positive impact it ultimately has on the community that surrounds it. So I really do think that the combination of this developer and a world-renowned and well-respected brand like the Ritz Carlton is truly an incredible opportunity that Tampa can't pass up.
All right. Thank you very much. Next speaker we have is Anne Langford. You may begin.
Hi, everyone, and good evening, Councilmen, and thank you for your time. I am in favor of this project. I'm very excited about the prospect of the Ritz residents coming to South Tampa. I'm speaking to you this evening as a resident who lives very close by. I live on 1301 South Howard Avenue, 33606. The facet that I'm most excited about is that the Ritz property will bring astute, diverse individuals to Tampa. I came here recently from New York City with a career in high-end personal and property appraisal and sales. I can speak on anyone and behalf of the luxury goods industry. And then a project like the Ritz will attract niche clientele to prop up this trade. I'm also very excited, being an art history major with a master's, of involving the community in that. I, St. Pete has done some very reputable things to engage your community. And I look forward to having a development here that will do the same. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Madam Clerk, the next selection of speakers.
All right, next we have is Keith Griminger, Janet Sherberger, as well as Jonathan Paul, John Acosta, whom is signed under Christine Acosta.
Okay. All right, bring him on. She's gotta stop texting you because it's blocking my view, Christine.
All right, we're gonna have to work on Mr. Jonathan Paul because I cannot elevate him. He may be on a device that's now allowing us to elevate.
All right, I see Keith on. I don't see any of the other speakers yet. Mr. Acosta, did you turn your camera on?
I'm trying to. I'm trying to. There it is. Hold on.
As well as Janet Sherberger. You just need to turn your video on as well.
All right, Mr. Acosta, are you speaking or is your wife speaking?
I am speaking.
All right, then for the record, just state your name because we see Christine's name.
Sure.
Okay, we're waiting on Janet. Janet, are you on? Because if you are, we, we need you.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, but your camera needs to be turned on.
I'm clicking share my webcam.
Okay, it should come on.
You see it? Am I there?
No. There you are. Okay, let's raise your right hands and we'll swear you in.
Do you, do you swear or affirm you would tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, Keith, you may begin. And unmute yourself. You're muted, sir.
Now, can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman and, and City Council members. My name is Keith Griminger, AIA. I live at 711 South Fielding Avenue, Tampa, Florida, 33606. I'm here speaking in favor of the project. When you hear words like, you know, Lake Shore Drive, Worth Avenue, Reddale Drive, you don't think of roads or corridors. You think of places. And that's what Bay Shore Boulevard is. It is a place. And the opportunity for a project like this to come on board is one that we should be proud and happy to have to help add to this place. As well as the group like the Related Group. Who have, many have said before, there are multiple projects here in the community. They decide to make an investment in this community. They're wanting to grow this community as we are. And they're, they're here to provide that. They've done a great job, I believe, with some of that, some of the, the design concepts. The tree preservation, the, what they're doing with the underpass of the, the Salmon Expressway. The ability for that connection over to our Bay to Bay Retail District. The opportunity for that district to grow and respond will be a, a great attribute. One of the things that has been brought about in this discussion tonight is the, is the, the nature of the tower and the location of the tower. This is a very narrow, but, but narrow, but deep piece of property. And so the setbacks, which they've actually granted as much as possible to the, to the front, to actually open that up. As you look at the curvature of Bay Shore, is actually allowed, you know, better visibility for the stone wall as well as their own residents. So the, the building placement, I think, is, is well-done, not only for the Phase 1 Tower, but for the Phase 2 Tower. I believe that this, this product, this project will add tremendous value. It will help promote Bay Shore as the world-class place that it is. And as we move forward with things like this, Bay Shore will continue to be that place. And with names like Ritz Carlton and the Related Group coming on to this, this property will have vast impacts for years to come. So I urge you to support this project because we need this project and many more. So I urge you to support this project because we need this project and many more to come as this community evolves and, and pushes towards the, the next century. So again, I urge you to support this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Acosta, you're next.
Good evening, City Councilmembers. My name is John Acosta. I live at twenty-four oh two West Morrison Avenue and have lived at the Monte Carlo Towers and remain a property owner there. My son is actually a rental tenant right now at Bay Oaks Park. My family and I are extremely familiar with the proposed project location and we wish to support the redevelopment. While we place high value on the protection of our tree canopy, we believe the overarching improvements in the area will offset the unfortunate loss of trees. We enjoy walking to the local restaurants, Crew Wine Cellar, Panerustica, Yoko's, and we look forward to going to the new Buddy Brew Coffee in that area that will open soon. The amount of walking and biking my family has done in the area has enabled us to be very familiar with every inch. And if you know my wife, we walk and bike a lot, every inch surrounding project you are discussing. We believe there are a lot of short-term improvements that can be made by the developer and respective partners to mitigate the challenges that such a large construction project will bring upon the neighborhood. My wife, active transportation advocate Christina Acosta, sends her best regards to the council. She asked me to convey our family's thoughts and her confidence as a developer to act upon reasonable requests that will be derived from a walk and bike community audit. She and other advocates made similar requests that were granted at the Grand Central across from the Oxford Exchange. That property now has bike racks, bicycle, bicycle repair station and adjacent to a covered Hart Transit stop along the buffered bicycle lane on Cleveland Avenue. My family and I robustly support the redevelopment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Janet Sherberger.
I'm Janet Sherberger and I live at thirty-eight twenty-one West San Luis Street. I'm a board member of Walk Bike Tampa and I live near the property and frequently bike and walk in this neighborhood. Of note to me and my organization, the developer is committed to making improvements that will make the surrounding streets safer for pedestrians and cyclists. As Related demonstrated in their presentation, they plan to improve streetscapes and connectivity as well as partner with the Expressway Authority to improve the MacDill Bay to Bay Underpass, which right now is really difficult to navigate on foot or on bike. The developer is also talking to Walk Bike Tampa about partnering on an audit of the area as, as John mentioned. So that our organization can determine what other active transportation improvements need to be made to better serve the neighborhood. So if the project's approved, we look forward to working with Related to make our community safer. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. I see Henderson Everett Lee, but you are not sworn in. So if you could please raise your right hand, we'll swear you in.
Okay. Do you swear or affirm you would tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? I will. Thank you.
All right, go ahead.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for taking the time tonight. I'm here to support the Related's project of the Ritz Carlton Residence. I have, I live at nineteen oh nine West Richardson Place in Tampa, three, three, six, oh, six. So I'm a neighbor, half a block off Bay Shore. I'm also a realtor with the Tony Everett Company. And I have spent my entire life watching the development of Bay Shore Boulevard grow. And to have a project like this with the Ritz Carlton Residence and the reputation of Related come to Tampa really puts us on the map. We are the only city in the, on the West Coast that is a true city. We have an international airport. Airport. You know, where we've got all the famous teams and I think that the Ritz Carlton Residence is such a beautiful addition to the Bay Shore Sky, the Bay Shore Boulevard, which is our premier boulevard, and I think that it really adds a lot to Tampa. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next selection of speakers, please.
Chair, that completes the rest of the list. I do have Jonathan Paul as a panelist, but he needs to turn on his camera.
Jonathan Paul, if you're logged on and if you can hear us, if you could please turn on your camera and we can swear you in for public comment.
Take down Ms. Lee's. Thank you.
All right.
In addition, if there's anyone that was missed that, that's still logged on as an attendee, if they could click the raise your hand icon.
Do you see anybody?
Let's see. No.
Do we have any recordings?
There are no recordings for the quasi-meanness.
Well, I was expecting four hours of public comment. All right, are you sure there's nobody else for public comment? I don't want to exclude anybody. I want to make sure that everyone's been counted.
I am going through the attendees list to see who's logged on and I will state that we have a Beverly Mauer, that's spelled M-A-U-R-E-R. She's logged on, but we're having difficulty elevating her. So I'm not sure she's not on the correct device as well as. Matthew Josie, he's also having that same issue.
Mr. Chair, just one clarifying question.
Yes, sir.
The, it sounded like at the beginning of the, of this, there were maybe twice as many people on the line. Do you think they got tired and dropped off or were they represented by the, the gentleman who spoke for fifteen minutes? Do we know?
If I can, I'll answer that. That calls for speculation and I don't think it's rather, rather appropriate to, to spend the time speculating. I will remind council, depending on what council does, if this does actually move forward, then it does have to come back for a second reading and an adoption public hearing. So I, I just want to acknowledge that this is the longest hearing with the most amount of speakers that we've ever had virtually. And I want to take the opportunity to acknowledge the City Clerk's Office and particularly Sue Ling Lucas, because I think she's done an amazing job with being able to organize this. So I, I apologize for, for the answer to my question, but I think we are doing the best we can with the alternate means of communication and the ability to participate in this hearing.
Thank you very much, sir. Madam Clerk, anything?
Yep, we have a Mr. Tony Everett. I'm gonna move over. He signed up under a different name, so he was not recognized. So I'll move him over now.
All right.
A reminder also, counsel, that when, after you have the chance to ask your questions, if you have them, then the petitioner has the last word at rebuttal. If you ask the questions after rebuttal, he'll have to respond with additional time to be able to finish that up. So I'm just going to ask you to do, ask your questions in advance if you have them. Allow the petitioner to rebut and then what I'm going to ask is I'm going to ask council to receive and file all the written documents that have been taken and been made available as part of this record. Thank you.
You got it. Do we have Tony Everett brought over?
He is over. He just needs to turn on his video.
All right, we hear you. We just need you to turn your camera on.
Turning it on, and I'm a girl.
Yeah, it's a Miss Tony Everett, not a Mister. I had a feeling. I said, I know this name and it's not, it's not a he.
We'll jump in one more time, just a second. Sorry.
All right.
And this is the last speaker, to your knowledge, Ms. Lucas?
This is the last speaker to my knowledge and like I stated, we had two others that had difficulties in elevated over due to the devices they're using.
And just a reminder to the public, just so you know, the instructions, as I stated, are available to participate in quasi-initial hearings at tampa.gov.net/ quasi, Q-U-A-S-I. And one of the important things that they do state is that smartphones do not work on this platform. Because it cannot, it does not, it does not allow you to be able to do that. So your option then is to use some other device or to put a, a comment in writing. And there are multiple ways of being able to do that.
Or go to the convention center, right, Mr. Shelby?
As a matter of fact, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Councilman Dingfelder. Could you just make one last inquiry of the convention?
Is there anybody at the Tampa Convention Center that's here to speak on this item, number nineteen?
This is Angel Sade from Planning and Development and there's no one here to speak on this item.
Thank you very much. All right, any luck with the camera? We've seen Jonathan, Jonathan Paul is on. If you can unmute yourself, we were, raise your right hand. We're gonna swear you in.
Swear or affirm you would tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
All right, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Jonathan Paul. I am a board member with Walk Bike Tampa. I live at seven twelve South Howard Avenue, Tampa, Florida, three, three, six, oh, six. I actually have twenty years of experience in land use and transportation planning. I'm an adjunct professor at the University of Florida where I teach transportation planning. And I work with local governments from St. Augustine to Sarasota, Destin to Miami Beach, basically helping to create environments that people want to walk and bike in. And so the Related Group approached Walk Bike Tampa and asked us to conduct a bicycle and pedestrian audit. We're going to actually hold, I believe, October twenty-seventh, invite neighbors, businesses and other interested individuals and actually walk Bay Shore, Bay to Bay, MacDill, and also ride along those corridors. And really with a focus on identifying improvements that could be made, some of which Related Group may partner with the City of Tampa on, but also something for them to move forward with. They're already making a significant investment in Santiago. We think that there's an opportunity also to connect to some of the retail uses along MacDill. There's also some opportunities to connect to the neighborhood around the area. We believe that this project could be a catalyst to continue to actually transform Bay to Bay. Provide residents there with the opportunity to walk and bike to many of those uses. As of right now, Bay to Bay is not really a safe corridor to walk and bike to. The City of Tampa is actually undertaking its own study. And so we hope to offer some insight and some perspective and also use some of the resources that I have that I use in other communities to actually prepare renderings based upon the feedback we get from individuals out there to show how Bay to Bay can be transformed to something that is a, a benefit to the community and provides a grand entrance into Bay Shore Boulevard. So Walk Bike Tampa is not taking any position in terms of for or against this project. But we are glad to work with the Related Group. They are trying to make a environment that's better out there for people to walk and bike. And we hope to work with them and with the, the City of Tampa. And I thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Was Tony Everett able to get the camera on?
No, sir. It doesn't look like they're able to.
Well, then that will conclude our public comment. At this time, are there any questions or comments by City Councilmembers? Councilman Goode, yes, sir?
Just related to Mr. Gardner. I've heard everyone's statements tonight. I always say, don't tell me what you can't do, what you can do. And I guess the biggest issue is, you know, this could be a great project, but I think your opposition is talking about the, the, the depth of the, of the project, the square footage of the project, the distance of the project. Any comments to, that you can share with us in reference to what the opposition is talking about that, that may help this project along?
Absolutely, Mr. Goode, and that's actually the, the thrust of our rebuttal. So I can either handle that as rebuttal or as a direct answer to your question.
Please, yes, Mr. Shelby? If that's going to be part of the rebuttal and that's something you're looking for, you're asking for that, why don't you wait to hear what the rebuttal is? And you could determine whether that answers your question.
We're, we're more than prepared to answer that question.
Thank you, sir. You're a big champ.
Thank you very much. Anybody else have any questions? Any Councilmember, Councilman Dingfelder?
Muted.
You're muted, sir.
Muted. You're muted, sir. Unmute yourself, Councilman.
Sorry, do we have a tree and transportation staff on board with this, this call?
We should have Melanie Callaway for Transportation, Councilman Dingfelder, and then Bill Boers for Natural Resources.
Melanie, you. Do we have them both pulled up? And I don't think they've been sworn in. Is that correct? Or have you?
I was sworn in at the beginning.
Yeah, I was.
The beginning of what? The beginning of this hearing?
Correct. When we began, I'm, I'm number nineteen.
Okay, thank you. I don't, I don't recall. Thank you.
You want to, you want to do it again just to be careful, Mr. Shelby?
Well, if she says she's been sworn in and the chairman recognizes that, all right, Madam Clerk, do you have a record? I've already previously sworn.
I don't recognize. I mean, I can swear again. That's fine. Do you swear or affirm you would tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Yeah.
Ms. Callaway, the, I think I heard a couple hours ago at the beginning of the presentation, they said that there'd be no, no increase in traffic, perhaps even a decrease in traffic. Did they provide a, a traffic study to you? Did you review it? What's your conclusion? Somebody mentioned that they're going from a hundred and seventy-six units to a hundred and eighty units, but they were increasing the number of parking spaces for those units significantly. So what, what, what's up with the traffic?
So yes, they did provide a traffic memo and that is in the record, clearly showing the difference in traffic to what was there existing to what is proposed. And it is the less number of trips. As you may recall, a lot of the time, it, the trips that are associated with any use is not in correlation with the number of required parking spaces. The trips are based on use of what is being proposed or existing, but not based on the number of parking spaces required. I don't know if I answered all of your questions.
So the, so I guess the, the bottom line is the previous building perhaps didn't have as many parking spaces, but it had the same number of units. Blowing units are blowing units, right?
Correct.
All right, and then, thank you, Melanie. Sorry to keep you all evening for that. Mr., Mr., Mr. Boers, in regard to, and you are, you are our tree expert from the city, just for the record. But in, in regard to the, to the tree removal that's being proposed, it looks like the requirement is what, fifty percent? That, that they, they should be leaving fifty percent. And yet they're asking to remove an, an additional thirty percent, take it down to twenty, twenty percent. I don't know if that's clear or not, but anyway, why don't you tell us what your evaluation is of the tree removal request?
Sure. I want to preface my remarks. I've been talking to the development group, the applicant and the community groups who have tree concerns regarding this project. And bottom line is, from my initial comments and from community groups' comments, they wanted to see the oak theme continue. This oak theme continuing on Bay Shore Boulevard and all the streets that intersect with Bay Shore Boulevard. And there was concern with the more than fifty percent removed that we wouldn't get that kind of tree canopy back. And so we worked with the applicant and he has drawn plans to replace any oaks that are coming out. And the other thing that we need to mention is that the oaks along Santiago currently are not of good structure, not the best health. The, the root systems have been impacted. And the oaks that are being proposed. The oaks that are being proposed for this project are six-inch caliber, which equates to about a 22-foot-high tree and about two-thirds of that Y. So we're gonna get better central leader trees, healthier trees, better root systems, and an improvement as far as the canopy. And they're going to save the, the two grand trees on the site and work around them. So from a natural resources tree canopy standpoint, we feel this will be a better project, better tree canopy overall.
And I saw somewhere in these, I think in the staff report, it also spoke to a contribution to the, the tree fund. Is that what they can't, there's not enough space to put, to put all the replacement on site, or?
Yeah, they've commented was made early on, but we were insistent from a staff perspective that we needed to see those replacements. The comment's been left there as a safety valve in case they can't get every single tree back. But we've been assured, and they have plans drawn, and we've had meetings on this, that anything that came out, like oak tree-wise, is gonna be replaced. Those numbers are gonna be replaced with some of the biggest nursery trees you can find. They were actually looking for bigger than six inches, but they found the biggest size they can find was six inches, 22 feet high. So the crux of the matter is the essential trees, the trees that make the canopy, are gonna be replaced, and then they're gonna embellish it with, with palm trees to give it a little bit of tropical theming. But we do want design continuity along Bay Shore Boulevard and this development. So we are looking for the oak canopy, and they promised to do that both in their drawings and throughout our meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Boers. And my last question, Mr. Gardner, and I apologize for cutting you off earlier, but I did want to hear from Mr. Fort and not you, but, but now you get a chance to, to jump, to jump back in. Clearly, one of the most critical issues that I heard from Mr. Vaca was this distance issue, 42 or 43 feet from one building to the next. Obviously, the Stovall residents have a great concern about that. Mr. Fort indicated that there were other options that were looked at. And I'm concerned about why, why they weren't selected. So you, you can definitely include that in your rebuttal. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We do have that one speaker that had issues getting the camera back on from public comment, and I don't want to keep anybody out. The clerk has notified me about that. If she's on, I think she has her camera on. If she would like to speak, and I'll give her three minutes, and that'll be it for public comment. All right, if you could turn your camera on, and we'll swear you in. There we go. All right.
Do you swear affirm, you would tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
My name is...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I'm sorry. The name on the screen, I just want to be clear. The name on the screen is not the speaker's name. She's gonna give it, I understand.
No, and she'll, she'll give it her name to put on the record. Is that fine?
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
My name is Tony Everett, and I'm in the real estate business, and, but I'm also a resident of generations of a family from Tampa. He's lived here for many generations and care about the development and the growth of Tampa, and we're very proud to have that growth. And, and downtown is being blooming now, but the significance of the related group, we are a business, family, community. And I think that the related group is very family-oriented. They have, they care very much about all their residents, not just the high-end Ritz-Carlton residents, but their affordable housing. They have exemplified that all over Tampa by many developments they've done. Therefore, I am very much in favor of this project. Bay Shore is my love, and I have even ridden horses back down to Bay Shore when I was young. So I'm very attached to it, and I want a development with a developer that really cares about the growth of, of the, of the development and, and the project and the aesthetics, and cares about the residents in Tampa, and keeps it a family-oriented area. Thank you very much. I hope you will vote for this project.
Thank you very much. That is it for public comment. Any other questions or comments from council members? Councilman Carlson, go ahead, sir.
I just wanted to ask, legal world has the, the Stovall representative talked about the distance between the two buildings. That, that considered substantial evidence in this case?
Thank you, Councilman Carlson. This is Kate Wells, Chief Assistant City Attorney. That is testimony that was presented to provide counsel with information as to the distance of other buildings along Bay Shore from each other. So each council member gets to decide what weight you give that evidence and the relevancy as it relates to the PD criteria in Chapter 27.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments from council members? Okay, at this point, we now have rebuttal by the petitioner, which is five minutes, if you'd like to. We have extra time, correct?
That's correct. And to confirm with Mr. Gardner, that was 10 minutes for rebuttal. Is that correct?
Yes. All right. Petition, if you'd like to go ahead, I'll begin the clock.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, counsel. We did hear some mention of traffic and trees as potential concerns. We're happy to answer those issues. We have experts on hand to do so. That said, we want to focus on the issues of separation, setbacks, and views. And as a lawyer, I want to start with the law. Mr. Vaca mentioned that the siding of the building does not promote substantial justice, which is a waiver criteria. To be clear, we're not seeking a waiver from any setback requirement, and therefore we do not need to provide that substantial justice that is promoted where, where the building sits. What we do need to provide is substantial justice on the tree, the loading burst, and the townhome waivers, and respectfully, and we respectfully believe that our written testimony constitutes substantial and competent evidence that the waiver criteria has been met. With respect to views and setbacks, the law on this is clear. It's the Fountain Blue case, which is in the supplemental information that we provided to you. And what it says is there is no legal right to a view or to the free flow of air and light from an adjacent property. That said, we have been very sensitive in the design of our buildings. After talking to neighbors and neighborhood stakeholders, including the Stovall Condomining Association, what we are spending tonight really is the compromise solution. The concern raised by Mr. Vaca seems to be primarily about the separation from residence to residence. Where most of us live in Tampa, we have seven-foot side yard setbacks. So we're generally 14 feet from our neighbors. And this is since we're proposing to be 46 apart from residents, which is more than triple how most, most of us live. It's also important to note that with respect to related and Ritz-Carlton, who have reviewed all of the plans, they are completely comfortable with the separation between the structures. And with that, I'm gonna yield the rest of my time to Mr. Fort, press here.
Are we gonna show the diagram? Mr. Fort, you're, you're muted.
No, I'm not.
No? Okay.
Yeah. Something else. I think, can you check?
We can hear you now. All right, go ahead. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to make several points because I think that it is important to clarify some of the diagrams that you saw. I'd like to give some historical background on the urban design of an era in our times. Many of the buildings that were shown, the large majority, were designed for smaller-sized units, and therefore they were placed perpendicular to the coast with balconies that were facing sideways. And therefore, the primary rooms, living rooms and, and bedrooms and master bedrooms, were facing straight out sideways into another set of living rooms and bedrooms, and therefore that distance was provided because that was a primary view of those units. And that needed to be done because the unit size was significantly smaller than what one provides in a Ritz-Carlton luxury product, in which the units are a lot larger. And therefore, when we do a project like this, we, we, once we have larger units, you turn the building sideways toward its basic front to the water, like it would be almost in every major waterfront city where such product is introduced. And we only have four units per floor, and all, all 100% of our primary spaces are looking out to Hillsboro Bay, and, and they're not sideways. So they're not looking into those windows that you saw. They're looking out. In fact, the way the layouts are done, there are no primary views sideways. So there wouldn't be a master bedroom looking into one of the spaces that you saw in those windows. And the only window of significance that is a primary window is in the corner rear, where we have a bedroom with a double window on the corner, but actually, we probably could do a window facing only to the townhouses and not necessarily to the side, but it is not the primary window of, of source of light for that one bedroom. It is, these are units that have a master and a living room facing the water and two secondary bedrooms facing back. So that, and the view into that next, that neighbor in that direction is into a series of secondary windows that are not the primary windows. So we were careful in our arrangement. I'd like to clarify that our glass line is really 46 feet away, not 42, but in consideration of the corner window of the living rooms in the Stovall, we actually pulled back further our corner where the living rooms are to 51 feet, so that you could see through. And we provided a risotto glass with balconies to further enhance the privacy so that one couldn't look down and up or in between to make it more difficult, so that we wouldn't create that vertical solid wall that you saw with a series of openings. But in fact, we actually created what amounts to a privacy shield. But I wanted to clarify these dimensions because we made a special effort in order to pull back the living rooms to create a 51-foot distance to the glass line of the living rooms. And so this is, I, I want to make that clarification. So I summarized two important points. One of them is that this is a luxury product that can afford layout in a manner that all primary rooms are facing forward or to the back and not sideways. And second, and there's no, and the particular model of the, of the past is, is one that related to smaller units that were placed in a, in a bar that was, that was water in order to provide light and air to a lot of small units. So this is, important to clarify also is that actually our living room edge is pulled back with respect to the, to the neighboring living room, which actually is projecting forward of ours, when in fact, based on the curvature of the road, we could have been forward. But in fact, we actually respectfully set back to provide, and we have diagrams that show the vistas from the Stovall that are towards diagonally towards downtown Tampa, and our, our building is not interrupting those corner views towards Tampa. So I thought it was important that I make these classifications because I do think we had the sensitivity to make this effort that was specific in that sense. And, and I don't think we can be compared with buildings that have primary windows on the side. We do not provide that in our building, and we can, we can minimize them, ensure that there's additional privacy for the Stovall. And so these were considerations in the design, and I think I was asked, alternatives, yes, we did pull back the building behind our setbacks from, from the Boulevard, and we did open up the vista in the corner, and we did set back our glass line at the corner where our living rooms are in additional distance to provide 51 feet.
Okay, thank you very much.
Chair, Chairman?
Yes.
True, here, there's one more image on your screen, I believe, and if I could just close with that.
All right.
Can you see the image?
We see slide 20 that shows the view corridor overhead of Bay Shore and the angle.
Yes, this is Architect Conica put this together specifically for Stovall and out of respect for them. What this shows is everything in blue is their view corridor being preserved. The only sliver that's in white, outlined by the red, is the, that is not preserved. And if your overall views are 360 degrees, we're preserving 330 degrees of 360, which is 92% of their views will be preserved. And I'd just like to close with thanking you for your time and your consideration, and we ask for your support in this iconic project.
Thank you very much. All right. Mr. Shelby, nothing else from Mr. Vaca or anything. That's done. Only the petitioner will have an opportunity to respond, correct? All right. There's some feedback. I don't know where it's coming from, but, Ms. Wells.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Kate Wells, Chief Assistant City Attorney. I wanted to make just a, a couple of items with regard to the testimony that you heard this evening and its relevancy or lack of relevancy with respect to the criteria in the code. At the beginning, Mr. Hudson presented a slide with regard to the anticipated increase in property taxes to be generated by this project. I would submit to city council that while interesting, I don't see that as relevant to the criteria in chapter or section 27-136 of the code that sets out the criteria that applies to your review on a PD, requested PD rezoning. Likewise, with regard to the million dollars in public art to be dedicated or the urban park under the expressway, while, again, interesting to the neighborhood based on the comments that were provided this evening, they are not relevant. Those two items are not relevant to the criteria in the code. With regard to the comments by the public, there were quite a few individuals that are excited about the idea of a Ritz-Carlton brand coming to the city of Tampa. Again, not relevant to the criteria in the code, neither the fact that it's a Ritz-Carlton brand or the number of times that was repeated in tonight's testimony. There was also discussion by a member of the public with regard to the anticipated economic impact. Again, not relevant, not a basis for your consideration this evening. Then another member of the public talked about the need to be more competitive with Singapore. Again, not relevant. When you close this public hearing and deliberate the merits of this application, I asked counsel to pay special attention to the criteria in section 27-136, which is the criteria upon which you, you review applications for PD rezoning, and also look at the criteria in section 27-139, section four, with regards to the waivers that are being requested. You're available to answer any question.
Any questions for Ms. Wells?
Mr. Chairman, Martin Shelby?
Yes.
I would like to close.
I would like to clerk to perhaps assist in any way and also ask anybody who has, especially if they are not speaking, to make sure that they are on mute because there is also, all of a sudden recently, um, feedback that's caused by somebody's microphone. So if you are listening in and an attendee or a respondent, thank you.
All right, I hear it's gone.
Could I ask one question, Mr. Chairman? The, um, Ms. Wells, the, um, there was a lot of discussion about the architecture uh, in the PD. Correct me if I'm wrong, in the PD, it's the, it's the, the, the space and the measurements, not the texture, correct? It's, it's, the, the texture is not guaranteed. So, um, and, and the fact that they, just like it might be a Ritz brand, we also can't count on the fact that it would be a certain architect, correct?
With regard to the team that is before you, while they are part of the application, there's no guarantee that that is the team that would eventually develop this parcel. Um, with regard to your question about the architecture itself, I would ask Mary Semeniego to answer that question because you're asking for testimony.
I've been asking with plenty of designing. Um, I see Mary jumped on to you, but she can correct me if I'm wrong. Um, you are correct.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else, sir? Anything else from council members at this time?
I'm going to ask because that that was one question and one answer. Is that sufficient, Mr. Gardner? Do you feel a need to add anything else to your testimony and rebuttal?
We do not know. Thank you, Mr. Shelby.
Thank you, sir.
All right, if there are no other questions or comments, I'm going to ask for a motion to close the public hearing. We have a motion to close from Councilman Miranda. Do we have a second?
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I didn't hear that. I'm sorry.
Now, Councilman Miranda, were you muted?
I, I make a motion to close the hearing, Mr..
We have a second from Councilmember Goode. Is there any objection to the motion to close the public hearing? Hearing none. By unanimous consent and without any objection, we have now closed the public hearing. What is?
I'm sorry. One last request before you move forward and that is to take this opportunity, now the public hearing is closed, to receive and file all the documentation that has been provided to City Council and has made available and is now asked to be part of the record.
Chairman, I move that all documents that have been received by this council do mail or phone or whatever records be received and filed in the city.
Second, Councilman Miranda with the second Councilman Citro. Any objection?
Can I have a roll, can I have a roll call on that too, please?
A roll call vote to receive and file.
Vera?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Ding Felder? Ding Felder?
He's frozen.
He's frozen, I think.
Ding Felder.
There he is.
Miranda?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
And Maniscalco?
Yes.
And Ding Felder says yes as well. I don't know, a technical glitch.
Motion carry unanimously.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Okay, the public hearing is closed. All uh, documents have been received and filed. What is the pleasure of counsel?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'll read it, um, and uh, see where it goes. Oh, if I may, Vera.
Substitute, it's the substitute, don't forget.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. And before I go, I mean, I heard from a lot of, um, people here tonight and pardon me speaking on my phones, there's something wrong with my computer, uh, hearing a lot of good people here tonight, including some very good attorneys, including uh, Mr. George Vacca, who we've never seen before at the City Council and, and has a stellar reputation. I know he used to work at uh, Falver White Bank Lopez uh, years ago with a sterling reputation. Um, and a lot of different people in the public and whatnot. Ultimately, I'm, I'm going to read this. I think this is a reasonable use. This has no bearing on the fact that this is going to be a Ritz Carlton, um, at all. Um, though certainly that's something, and this has no bearing whatsoever on my decision, though that's certainly something that, that a lot of people can be excited about. Um, we're, we're doing the use, not the, not the name of, of the institution. Uh, they could sell it to, to Howard Johnson or something. I don't even know if they're still around, but you know what I'm saying. Um, but ultimately I think the root, the use is a reasonable one and I'll be reading the subsequent ordinance. If I may, Mr. Chair, I move a subsequent ordinance being presented for first reading consideration. An ordinance rezoning property in General Assembly three one zero five Bay Oaks Court in the city of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in section one from zoning district classification RM thirty-five residential multifamily to PD plan development residential multifamily residential single family attached, providing an effective date.
Do we have a second?
Chairman, I'd like to add to that, if I may.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I'll second and add to it. Um, we're talking about file number RZ twenty dash thirty-eight. That's item number nineteen. I'd like to add to that, sir, that the, um, that the goals and objective of the comprehensive plan have been met, uh, um, that the proposed development is shown on the site plan promotes or encourages development that is appropriate location, character and capability with the surrounding neighborhood. B, that the purpose uses promote an effective and sustainable use of land and infrastructure for the waivers. Uh, section one, that, the section that I was reading on is twenty-seven one thirty-six, the section that I'm going to read now is twenty-seven dash one thirty-nine four. But the design of the proposed development is unique and therefore is in need of waivers. A, B, that the request of waiver shall not substantially interfere or injure the rights of other properties which would be affected by the waiver.
Thank you very much.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, I adopt those and I thank our esteemed colleague Charlie Miranda for that. Thank you, sir.
And, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chairman, Martin Shelby, one last thing, um, Mr. Vera and Mr. Miranda to include as part of the motion, uh, the revision sheet and the changes between first and second reading, please.
So include.
We have a motion from Councilman Vera. We have a second from Councilman Miranda and we have a, a hand raised by Councilman Ding Felder. Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Shelby, can I articulate, uh, the reasons why I might not be voting with the motion?
Yes.
Okay, like as in discussion on the motion?
Well, the question is, I, I suspect by you raising your hand, I, you were in effect, about to address the discussion on the motion. Councilman Chairman Maniscalco didn't articulate discussion on the motion, but obviously the, the time to do that.
Okay, I just don't want to, I don't want to.
Mr. Chairman, that was your intent after the, after, um, entertaining the motion to ask council for discussion on the motion. You recognized Mr. Ding Felder?
Yes, I did. If, if you'd like to add anything, we already have a second on the floor and it is open to discussion.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Shelby, I, I didn't want to, I didn't want to step on your process and, you know, and mess up.
No, certainly, certainly. There is a motion on the floor. There is a second to the motion and, and council certainly has, each council member has the right to, um, to, uh, have a discussion on the motion.
Yeah, I'm not offering any new evidence or anything else. Um, we've, we've heard the evidence and, um, there's two main issues that, that I have a problem with. Um, um, first, as related to the tree removal, the, the petitioner is asking for a waiver on the, on the tree removal, um, from fifty percent down to twenty percent, which is, at the end of the day, is an eighty percent removal of all trees on site. And, um, and I didn't hear competent substantial evidence to justify why that was necessary. And, and second, perhaps, um, well, I wouldn't say one's more important than the other, but the second reason that I'm not going to support the motion is compatibility. Um, I think that, uh, with all due respect to obviously a world-class architect and, 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 and I'm not, I'm not questioning, uh, hi, his abilities by any means. Um, but it just didn't appear to me that they worked closely enough with their, with their new neighbors in the, in the stovall. I think the stovall showed that, you know, Tampa's not Miami. Um, we are, uh, Bay Shore is, is not, uh, you know, downtown Manhattan. Um, the, the consistency and the compatibility that exists right now has shown by the evidence that was provided by the stovall folks and specifically my Mr. Vacca and Mr. Gross, uh, showed distant separations typically in the neighborhood of ninety to a hundred and forty feet up and down the Bay Shore. And, um, and compatibility is one of the factors that I believe that, uh, is important in our evaluation of, of any PD. Um, it's not to say I, I, I don't, I don't have any desire to deny this project. I'd prefer to see a continuance, um, where, you know, whereby the petitioner would have an opportunity to, um, slightly modify their design. They've got four acres to work with and, uh, and they could push, and the, and the, the architect, uh, Mr. Fort clearly testified at the very beginning when I asked him that there were other options that could push that Bay Shore building, uh, further away from the, uh, from the stovall. So with all due respect to, um, Mr. Gardner and his, and his fine team, um, you know, uh, I, I, you know, I, I can't support the motion at this time. I, I could support a, a continuance for that purpose, but not, not this motion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have a motion.
Councilman?
Councilman Goode.
I always say, you know, don't tell me what you can do, what you can do. And I have to agree, Mr. Ding Felder, on point number two. I think it could be a little bit more discussion on the width of that building. Uh, when I looked at the one photograph from the opposition and I look at the building, how close it was and where it was facing, I can kind of see, uh, the point they're trying to make. I was hoping that, uh, I guess we can't mandate a sentencing back, but I was hoping to Mr. Gardner would have a little bit more discussion about that or possibly say, let's, we, we might could take a look at that. I thought that, I know we've got to read some, some laws and some rules, but sometimes you always can still work with the community you've got to, uh, deal with. So I was hoping to get a little more, a little more out of that, uh, uh, of the team, uh, rubber, so let's, let's go back and see what else we could do to make sure we're, we're working with everybody in the community. So I'm still on the fence at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. We have a motion from Councilman Vera. We have a second from Councilman Miranda. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Vera?
Yes.
Goode?
Oh.
Ding Felder?
Yeah.
Miranda?
Yes.
Carlson?
No.
Citro?
Yes.
And Maniscalco?
Yes.
Motion carry with Goode, Ding Felder and Carlson voting no. Second reading and adoption will be held on November fifth at nine thirty AM.
Thank you very much. Would the clerk or anyone like a five-minute break or would you like to just continue? Five-minute break? All right, we're going to take a five-minute break. You can put your cameras off and your microphones on, on mute, but do not log out of the meeting. Thank you. Five-minute break.
Goode?
Yeah.
Carlson?
Here.
Ding Felder?
Here.
Citro?
Here.
Miranda?
Yeah.
And Maniscalco?
Here.
Here.
All right, we will continue with this agenda. We have four more items. Next is item number twenty. For an end, please raise your hand.
I've already been sworn. Do you want me to swear in again?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Every time.
So you swear affirm you would tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And the clerk suffered, did not receive any written comments on this item.
Thank you very much. Mr. Manassi?
Thank you, Chair. Ryan Manassi, planning, design, and development coordination. Item number twenty is file number REZ twenty dash thirty-seven. It's for the property located at eighteen oh eight East Caracas Street. The request before you is going from RS sixty to PD for residential, single-family detached. I'll defer to the planning commission for their report, and please return to me afterwards.
Jennifer, along with the planning commission, if I could share my screen, please.
All right, go ahead.
Okay. File number twenty thirty-seven is located in the Central Tampa Planning District. It is within, it is also within the East Tampa Urban Village, which is the designation within the comprehensive plan. It's not located within evacuation zone. The closest recreational facility is Giddens Park, and there is a transit stop about point three miles away from the subject site. This is the subject site here outlined in purple. We're on East Caracas Street. East Pearson Avenue is to the north. The adopted future land use of the subject site is residential ten. There's not a lot to show on this map. It's the predominant future land use of the surrounding area. I would just say that the, if the subject site, if this is approved and the subject site is able to do the cheap dwelling units, the overall density of the subject site will be at seven point one forty minutes per acre, which is consistent with the underlying residential ten density. And again, this is in the urban village, and IMF policy one point one point seventeen seeks to direct the greater share of growth to the urban centurion villages. We found that this will contribute to the growth of the East Tampa Urban Village, and it will not alter the development pattern of the neighborhood. That includes the presentation.
Thank you. Mr. Manassi?
Thank you, sir. Can you please share my screen? And please let me know when you see REZ twenty dash thirty-seven.
Yes.
Yes, we can. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, again, item number twenty is file number REZ twenty dash thirty-seven, and it's for the property located at eighteen oh eight East Caracas Street. The applicant is, again, requesting a rez on the property from RS sixty-two plan development, and that's to allow two single-family detached residential lots. The property is located one lot east of North Eighteenth Street and East Caracas Street intersections on the north side of this, or I'm sorry, I'm both on the north side of the street. The required minimum lot width in the RS fifty zoning district is fifty feet width with a five thousand square foot minimum lot area. The proposed Lot One measures forty-five point zero nine feet by one thirty-seven point sixteen feet, with a total lot area of six thousand one hundred eighty-three square feet. And the proposed Lot Two measures forty-five point zero nine feet by one thirty-seven point five four feet, with a total lot area of six thousand one hundred ninety-two square feet. Therefore, the only way to allow for the two buildable lots is to request this plan development. That's before you tonight. These lots would not meet the minimum RS fifty zoning district requirements. The setbacks for Lot One are east five feet, west five feet, the north or the rear twenty feet, and the south, which would be the front, at forty-two feet four inches. And Lot Two is east at five feet, west at five feet north, which is the rear at twenty feet, and the south, which is the front, at thirty-three feet five inches. The maximum building height is proposed at thirty-five feet, and the property is surrounded by zoning district RS sixty to the north, east, and west with detached single-family residents in the and zoning district RS fifty to the south with detached single-family residences. The site is located in the East Tampa overlay, and it must comply with the code at time of permitting unless waived herein. There are two waivers that are requested tonight before you. I'd like to point out that, I think, was it both of the, one of these waivers come from the urban design section, which did find it inconsistent. And I'd just like to state for the record that urban design staff did find it inconsistent because they did not support the current placement of the driveway as it's proposed. It is inconsistent with the overlay district standards, and staff recommends incorporating a garage or carport into the design to meet the standards. Given the depth of the lot proposed, the applicant has adequate space to incorporate a garage into this design. Next, we'll go to the staff analysis, which includes the conforming map, which is on the screen. The Limpert's Addition subdivision was originally planted in nineteen twenty-six with lots that measured in varied width from forty-five feet to forty-seven point five feet and in depths of a hundred feet to one hundred and thirty-seven feet.
Can you, can you blow that up and tighten in on the subject lot?
Sure. Do you want to lose the counts up here? Or is this, is that good?
That's much better now. Go up a little, raise it up a little.
More?
That's good. Thank you.
Yes, sir. The overall area of analysis included the Limpert Addition subdivision. The area of analysis included five hundred and eighty-four total zoning lots. Five hundred and fifty-two or ninety-five percent of those lots have been developed with a width of fifty feet or greater, and thirty-two or five percent have been developed with a width of forty-nine point nine nine feet or less. Pursuant to the review of the existing development pattern, the subject block contains six total zoning lots, and six or a hundred percent of those lots have been developed with a width of fifty feet or greater. The eighteen hundred block of East Caracas Street contains five total zoning lots with a width of fifty feet or greater, and the block face itself contains two lots with widths greater than fifty feet. Due to this, staff has identified the existing development pattern in the study area is composed of the majority of the lots are fifty feet or greater in width. Only five percent of the overall study area has lots that are less than fifty feet in width. The entire block face, a hundred percent of it, has lots which are fifty feet wide, lots or greater. Staff finds the proposed request inconsistent with the existing development pattern of the overall study area. And again, the conforming map on the screen shows what's used for the analysis area. And then the subject parcel, as Councilman Dingfelder was having me zoom in, but I'll just point out here, is the outlined property that's hatched in black. This is the zoning map. As you can see, the RS sixty zoning district that the subject parcel is located in is the hatched area in green, and then RS fifty of butts to the south. The aerial map in front of you shows the subject property outlined in red, and then the thousand-foot buffer to also identify any historic landmarks, which would be national or local. There are none within that thousand-foot radius. The next slide will show the proposed site plan. And this is the overall lot that has the two properties in the middle are the proposed lots, and they're the forty-five foot point zero nine width lots. And some elevations of the structure. This was erroneously left out of the staff report. Natural Resources is on the line in case you have any questions about this tree evaluation report, because there was a grand tree. I did want to include in this slide, but if you have any additional questions, or if you'd like me to leave it up for you to review, please let me know.
I can't read, I can't read that at all. I thought there were two grand trees.
I could let Bill Boers, if you want me to finish, and then I can defer to Bill Boers for natural resources, and he can answer your questions, and I can keep that slide up if you'd like, sir.
You blow up a little bit?
Up? Yes, sir. Oh, the other way? Down?
Blow it up. Let me make it wider. A second. There you go.
And I see Bill just popped on. If we'd like to just jump to him real fast, if you guys would like any questions answered.
Happy to.
Bill, would you, would you mind just going through this grand tree evaluation?
There's three grand trees on this property.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. This is a separate hearing. If we could just get him sworn in.
Oh, we're good. Okay.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm you would tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
There's three grand trees on this property. They are borderline preservation-worthy. They're labeled C eights. If they were a C nine, they could be automatically removed. They're just good enough to call them preservation-worthy, but they are not great trees. They are live oaks. I was on site. I saw some significant decline in all three of them. And I was wondering what the problem was. And so I studied historical photos back to two thousand and seven on Google, and they were still in decline. So they're, they're in a decline spiral. So I talked to the applicant about it, and as natural resources staff, we don't have issues with the removal of two out of the three, as long as they kept one. We thought that was a good balance of at least keeping one tree, letting two succumb to development, because these trees have twenty to twenty-five percent of their canopy left. If they were floral oaks, we would have them all come out, but they're live oaks, strong-witted trees. So we were looking to save tree number two, because we can work around that, curving the driveway around it. Tree number one, the largest one, is in the middle of the building path. That's, and with a huge canopy spread. However, since these trees are relatively close together on the lot, they're subordinate to one another. There's a significant shading with each one of these trees. That's one of the reasons the canopy's in decline. The other reason is a lot next door is higher. And so this, this lot has been collecting water for a number of years. And so I think the decline is twofold. One, they're close together, and two, poor drainage. And live oaks love positive drainage. They want water to drain away from them, not into them. So when I was on site, I could see that it was soggy, even though in a dry period. I was on the site in March when this first came up. So we, we felt the balance here would be to retain one, because we can work around it. We don't have major heartburns if they take out trees number one and three, and they have to mitigate for those. We have to ask any questions.
Do we have any questions for the gentleman? All right.
May I continue?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Thank you. So just finishing up some of the slides that are before you, it's pictures of the site, the subject site itself, and maybe they'll lay picture or help you out with some of the trees that Bill was discussing. This is just facing north. As you can see, the properties to the north are residential, single-family, also to the east and west, and then the south. The west neighbor, and then the east neighbor that abuts this property. And then the south neighbors that are directly across the street. One's a vacant lot, and the other is a single-family residential structure. And again, that's, that's the RS fifty zoning district to the south. Now, the development review and compliance staff has reviewed the application, and we find the request inconsistent with the Tampa Land Development Code. If you would, please refer to the findings by urban design in relation to the parking placement in the front yard being inconsistent with the East Tampa overlay district standards. If it is the pleasure of city council to approve this application, there are modifications that are outlined in the revision sheet of the staff report that would be required between first and second reading of the ordinance. And planning staff, natural resources, as well as transportation are available for any questions that you may have.
Do we have any questions at this time, Councilman Dingfelder and Councilman Goode?
Ryan, can you put up the site plan? We can see what you're talking about in regard to the to this driveway issue and no, no garage or carport or what?
Sure. So what I'm referencing to in your staff report, you'll see on page number three, urban design comments. They did find it inconsistent due to the code sections that require the parking and the driveway to be constructed from the road to the front yard face. They do not show a garage or carport. They're just showing the parking driveway. And again, due to that, urban design staff did not support it due to the placement of the driveway as proposed, and they did want, they did recommend incorporating a garage or carport into this design to meet the East Tampa overlay design standards. Maybe the elevations will help out, too. Let me do that. See if this, let me zoom out a little bit. As you can see, the elevation up here in the, the front of the structure would just be the driveway to the front of the structure.
It looks like it has a little bit of a bungalow, one-story bungalow look to it. I don't know where you'd put a if, if now that it's a very narrow lot, I don't know where you'd put a carport or a garage on a, on a bungalow-ish structure, but there seems to be a little bit of inconsistency there.
Ryan Manassi with planning and design. So as stated in the staff report, although it is narrow, the lot is lengthy. It's a hundred and thirty-seven feet compared to most RS fifty lots. It may be fifty by one hundred feet. So again, I'm speaking for urban design comments, and their reviewers that design, that reviews particularly for those code sections, that they wanted that in place to make it more of the essence of that code section for the East Tampa overlay. Again, the length is a hundred and thirty-seven, so maybe they could have incorporated, incorporated a carport or garage in their design somehow to get urban design comments consistent. I would let the applicant or the agent answer any further questions on that. They may have further conversation with urban design at the time.
One last question. What is the, what is the overlay, East Tampa overlays specifically say as related to the garage or carport?
Ryan Manassi, I'll direct your attention to page three of the staff report. Item number four is the urban design section. So these would be the final comments that were presented to staff to be placed in this report. In their, in their report, they state the section twenty-seven to forty-one F, and it's in reference to parking, no driveway shall be constructed from the road to the front yard face of a principal structure unless providing vehicular access to an attached garage or carport. So they've outlined the code section from the East Tampa overlay that directly relates to their inconsistent finding, as well as that italicized bold comment from urban design that I stated for the record that they, they recommended incorporating that garage or carport into the design.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman Goode.
Well, Mr. Dingfelder took a little bit of a thud, because I'm familiar with the East Tampa overlay, and specifically looks for garages and carports. I don't see this design having either. Also, I believe you say that almost, what, ninety-seven percent of that area is fifty, is, is, is fifty percent of the mass of the land. So to reduce down, was it forty-five? Was it forty-five, Ryan?
Yes, sir. Forty-five.
Right. Now, most, most all the properties over there are fifty or above, correct?
Correct, sir.
I'm familiar with the area. I see a lot of inconsistencies with this design, and a lot of inconsistencies with the whole project as far as that street and that area. It's just not consistent at all, but I can see this particular time. So I could tell you right now, I'm not too much in support of this at this particular time, but I'll hear from the petitioner.
Thank you very much. Any other questions at this time? Mr. Manassi, do you have anything else, sir?
That concludes my presentation, Chair.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Yeah, Steve McElhenney. I'm representing the petitioner. Can you share my screen, please?
Okay.
This is the site plan that we, we talked about before, and we've worked very closely with staff. Let me point out, first of all, that the lots, these are planted lots, and they're planted at the forty-seven, between forty-seven and forty-five feet wide. So we're reestablishing what was planted in nineteen twenty-six. Now, we, we curved this driveway so that it would save the, the tree and the front, which, again, we worked with natural resources to do that. The other two trees that Bill Boers talked about, one is in the center, that limb spread is, goes across both lots. And it's, it's in decline, and what we agreed to do was to preserve the tree in the front and and enhance that. Now, let me show you. Let me go back to this, this screen. Can you see that?
Yes, we can.
Okay. If you look at this, the, the analysis is skewed, because what's happened is they've added all of the lots up against Hillsborough Avenue, commercial lots, which are, are large. If you look at this, the the analysis is skewed because what's happened is they've added all of the lots up against Hillsborough Avenue, commercial lots, which are large. They haven't really included these other lots. At least they have diluted the impact of the lots down here, which are are fifty foot or less in size. And they didn't account for these that are directly adjacent to the north and to the south. And then let me show you what happens with our radius map. Is that up on the screen now?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Out of thirty-three lots that were noticed, nineteen of them are of the similar size of what we're proposing. So that takes the percentage of lots that are immediately in the area. And the ones that we received notice for, that increases the percentage to about fifty-four percent of the lots that are there. One of the other things that we did was look around. Let me show you this. These are homes that were all built within two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. And as I scroll through them, this is a kind of a style that we were proposing with this bungalow style. None of them have garages. They all have driveways. And you can see that they have nice bungalows with driveways on the side and no garages. There, I just pulled seven examples of those. And this, this is what we were proposing to build, which was the bungalow that Mr. Dingfeller referred to, referred back to you earlier. Let me get these off of the, unless you won't leave them up, I'm going to take those back down so we can see some other things here. There we are. I read through the East Tampa CRA report and their strategic plan very thoroughly. And their their analysis is that they are promoting and want to promote single family homes for homeownership and for rentals. And I've spoke to Ed Johnson about it. And I have a letter from him indicating that top priority, and I'll put that on the screen. That the major priorities of East Tampa is to provide affordable and market rate housing within the designated boundaries. We we've worked very hard with all of the staff to try to meet those needs. Now, this is not a large tract development. This is an infill project. And in order to make it affordable, we deleted the garage. The garage adds fifteen to twenty thousand dollars in cost to this house. And I know council has been very sensitive to trying to to take the cost down regarding these structures. If we're forced to add that back into this plan, we have the ability to do it. But it but just keep in mind, it's going to add another approximately two hundred dollars a month to whatever your your mortgage cost is. We've tried to to determine that this is, you know, in harmony. And I think that by looking at the map with the adjacent structures, you can see the design is compatible. It is in harmony. We're not interfering with the rights of others. It is compatible. And the purpose and intent of the CRA plan was to provide some type of housing for these vacant lots, to take them out of their vacant status and begin providing usable and valuable houses for the residents. The residents themselves conducted the survey to determine what their highest priority was. Their number one priority was to provide infill housing. And again, you're all familiar with the larger tract developments that came in and you heard a lot of criticism about that happening. These are custom homes. They are smaller in scale and they are exactly the way this this area was planted and what it was designed to be. Again, the East Tampa strategy was to provide high quality homeowner units. And so you're we're squeezed between having to provide a high quality unit and the cost of the development. We've taken steps to improve the housing stock, which is another one of the CRA objectives. We've promoted the efficient and and sustainable land use as it's as is planned. We're consistent with the East Tampa plan, except for the garage. I mean, we're asking for an exception on the garage. And again, if council believes that that's an important component to add back in, we can add it back in. As long as you understand that it's going to increase the cost of those affordable units. This is 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 consistent with the original planning of nineteen twenty-six. The lots are very deep. We're going to have six thousand one hundred plus square feet on each of these lots. So it's not so much the frontage width as it is the overall depth of the lots. We also are consistent with the planning commission and the R ten designation. And all of your other goals that I know all of you have talked about, how do you get East Tampa redeveloped? Well, there are some exceptions you're going to have to look at and weigh in on and decide what what is most important. Affordable housing stock that looks nice and it looks and it's more similar to what you have in Seminole Heights as opposed to the shotgun houses that you have down in in Ebor City. As I showed you on the on the screen, there are numerous examples of other homes built within the last two years that don't have garages. Now, they didn't go through you for rezoning and I'm not sure how they got approved without the garage. But they did and they're there. I gave you seven examples of homes that had been built within two years. The lot pattern matches what was originally planted and it's compatible with your land use policies nine point two, nine point two point one, nine point three, nine point three point eight, nine point five, nine point five point one. So there is there is some significant and substantial documentation regarding your plans that that are supported, that support this petition. If you look at the CRA report, which was done in two thousand and nine. The purpose and intent for the redevelopment and reuse of precedent setting characteristics for planted lots. Promote and advance the redevelopment process of the area and to promote and preserve the existing residential. It also says non-residential, but in this case, it's residential uses within the area. And as I said, this was a resident driven analysis. And they came back and said that basically that this is what they would like to see. Now, I I don't think that's a fair analysis when you include properties all the way up to Hillsborough Avenue for for comparison to what is compatible on a residential area that's that's four, almost five blocks to the south. So I can't, I can't compare and I can't compete with the size of those properties. And it's usually the analysis way out of proportion for residential uses. So I would respectfully ask the the council to, I mean, weigh in on the garage issue. I think that this, other than that, we are one hundred percent compatible. We worked with natural resources regarding the tree removal and the tree enhancement that has to go back in. And again, as I said, it's restoring the original planted lots. I spoke with, I got, I think I got two or three phone calls. And they were extremely happy that it was single family residential going back in there. And I also met with the neighbors across the street. They were happy as well. I've asked each one of them that called me whether they cared if there was a garage or not. And they didn't have any feelings one way or the other. Just in summary, the design of the proposed development is unique because of the trees that are there. The waivers that are being requested, don't interfere with the rights of others. The waiver is in harmony and serves the general purpose intent of this chapter. And allowing the waiver will result in substantial justice being done regarding this project. This particular builder is a small builder and was recruited by, they had an outreach program by the East Tampa CRA that was looking for smaller builders instead of large tract home builders. So I just guess in summary, we're respectfully requesting your approval. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you have, but I believe that we have significantly demonstrated why this project is is valuable and should be considered favorable.
Mr. Manassi.
Thank you, Chair. Ryan Manassi with planning and development. I just want to point out for the record that some of the photos that were shown by Mr. McElhenney show the driveway going to the side of the structure. And again, I would like to point out page three of the staff report under the urban design section that references the parking section twenty-seven two forty-one F. It's it states in reference to parking, no driveway shall be constructed from the road to the front yard face of the principal structure unless providing vehicular access to an attached garage or carport. The only reason I'm stating this is I want to make it clear for the record that it was stated by Mr. McElhenney. He doesn't know how other places were approved with that. Maybe that was the reason because the driveway was going to the side of the structure. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from council members? All right.
Mr. McElhenney, you you stressed about the garage. Then you said it would cost twenty thousand dollars, which I think is probably fairly accurate. But but you didn't mention much in the way of carport. Maybe the carport would be a compromise. Because the carport would would still meet the urban design standards, but a carport doesn't cost as much.
I think the problem is that if you go back to the site plan and I can put it back up on the screen. If you go back to the site plan, you you have to take, is my cursor, is my cursor showing?
Yeah, that's it.
Are you seeing my cursor?
Yes, sir.
Do, it would still be the same amount of roof line. So what you're doing is you're eliminating one sidewall and and perhaps you convert the front into into some kind of a door. But if you if you're trying to keep with a bungalow style, you, it's very hard. I mean, if you go with a bungalow style, it's very hard to figure out how to do that. So you're taking out the front room for a garage or a carport. I mean, we we can figure it out if the if the council feels strongly about incorporating a carport or a garage, covered garage. We can figure it out if that's making makes a difference between approval and not approval.
I wasn't, I wasn't talking about intruding into the into the design of the house that you already have. I was talking about putting the carport out in front, in front of the rectangular house that you've already designed.
The urban design guidelines won't let you do that. It has to be incorporated into the into the building. It can't protrude out in front. And we thought about that one too, but then we've got to be careful of the canopy of that tree we're trying to save. We can.
Is that true, Mr.? Is that true, Ryan? That the the urban design standards require the carport to be tucked into the house?
Integrated, yes, sir.
I don't know what integrated means. I mean.
Inside that, as Mr. McElhenney is stating, I know Mr. McElhenney did have a lot of conversation with urban design staff in reference to this carport and garage. But it does have to be in that envelope of that structure. Urban design wouldn't be favorable of it just being placed, you know, smack dab in front of the the principal structure as it shows.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman Goode.
I I saw on that CAC board and I I'm familiar. All of the homes that are being built now in East Tampa have garages. It'll have carports. That's not the design of the neighborhood, carports. You go up to North Tampa area, yeah, that's been the old model design of carport. But down the middle part of East Tampa, there's no carports. The reason they wanted garage because they wanted the new modern look of other areas to give that beautification look of the community. That's why they changed the overlay to make specifically that garages were built. That street that he's talking about in that particular area, those lots are big lots. And it's not consistent, this design is what's being built or was constantly there now. So I still have an issue with the lot and I still have an issue that is not meeting the East Tampa overlay.
Mr. McElhenney, you wanted to speak?
Um, no, we can certainly commit to changing and incorporating a garage. It'll be a different, a different design of a home. But we can incorporate a garage into the front so that we meet the urban design guidelines. I certainly would appreciate consideration for that. And and we can make you make a garage go in there. We just, I don't know exactly what it'll look like, but we'll make it look nice.
All right, anybody else?
You could see that between first and second reading if you approve it.
I don't know whether, I don't know whether that's the case. Is that a step question for staff?
Ryan Manassi, planning, design and development coordination. No, if the modification requires two or more reviewers for our code section twenty-seven one forty-eight C five eight two, it'd be required to be continued to a four week, at least four weeks. Within that timeframe, the applicant would have to submit revised plans no later than twenty, giving staff twenty-one days to review these revised plans to present to council. Another point I wanted to make would be kind of answering, it wasn't a question from Councilman Goode, but just to state for the record, just because the garage would go in an urban design may go away and be okay with that. I still want to point out that staff did still find the overall analysis inconsistent with the the development pattern of the area.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I think that it would be useful if we requested a continuance on this, to revisit this with staff and provide a different design concept that may be more favorably considered by council.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, have, is there anybody who's scheduled, who's signed up to speak or anybody at Tampa Convention Center? I'm curious to know if somebody.
Registered to speak or do we have anybody live in person?
No one has voted to speak on this item.
This is Aileen Rosario from Planning and Development and there's no one here to speak on this item. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. McElhenney, you'd like to then request a continuance or make a vote and have us continue this?
Yes, sir.
How long do you need?
Well, staff is indicating at least thirty days, right, Ryan?
Correct, sir.
We can continue this to, correct me if if it's if it's very busy, Mr. Shelby, but there's November twelfth.
I think November twelfth, I think November twelfth, unless somebody knows more than I do, I think we could fit this one in for November twelfth. Or you might have, I I don't know exactly what the number is for November twelfth. Does anybody from staff know the number?
Ryan and Mary touched on it.
Mary Simoniego, we have eleven cases for November twelfth.
And you'll be back. And you'll be back, you'll be back in some form or fashion into an in-person or a hybrid by then. So if council wants to do that and add that additional, go over your ten.
December tenth in the evening. What is your pleasure, Mr. McElhenney?
December is fine. I certainly don't want to burden the council on loading up your agendas.
All right, let's do December tenth at six P M.
A motion to that effect, please.
Yeah, Mr. Dingfeller?
So the only thing I have concern about is, Mr. Manassi pointed out, there's there's two issues here. The first issue is, are we encouraging or allowing the lot split? Because, and I think Councilman Goode's even alluded to this, that that particular block face, I mean, I know we can can argue about how we measure and how far out we go and this and that. But that particular block face is consistently, appears to be, you know, definitely larger than fifty feet. And it looks like it's consistently sixty feet or more. And Mr. Manassi testified to that on both sides of the street. So I think the first hurdle we have to get over before we, we don't want to tell Mr. McElhenney, come back with a revised site plan if we're still going to deny it on the basis of the lot split. I don't think that'd be fair to him or his client. So I don't know if I can support a continuance on that basis because I'm not sure I I support the lot split.
Councilman Miranda. You're muted, sir.
Uh, I'm not. I've seen two maps. I saw one map that was shown by the city. And I've seen another map that was shown by Mr. Mickolini. They were both different. One said that this was the area that included the lot face on Hillsborough Avenue. Mr. Mickolini showed another map that said he meets the criteria based on the 250 feet circumference of the surrounding lots of property blocks that he said, I believe was 50 some percent were the same as division as his. Whether that's a factual, what I heard or not, it's up to discussion. Well, which map is correct?
Well, if you're asking, if you're asking me, I went through and determined that the lot sizes were the same. They were very similar to what was being proposed. If you remember on the, even on the city's map, the two lots to the northwest corner were of the same size. The two lots directly across the street were vacant, but they were of the same size. So you had at least four that were immediately adjacent to this property that were either the same size or less. I mean, I can put, I can put my map back up here.
We'd like to have something. I'm hearing two things from both sides.
No, I understand that, but I just needed an opportunity to address Councilman Goode's concerns about what was going in there. There, there aren't any new developments in this, in this area. There are vacant lots in the area and they're smaller. We can deal with, with those things. I just like an opportunity to go back to staff and try to work some of these issues out.
Mr. Manassi.
Thank you Chair. Ryan Manassi with Planning and Development. I don't mean to drag this on. I just, if you'd like to share my screen, I could show you our conforming map again and explain any questions that you may have that staff utilizes for any type of rezoning in this scenario where you're going to a substandard lot in the zoning district. Just to be clear, this is what staff uses and previously discussed at council as well. We do a 13, 20 feet and then we try to look at the subdivisions that were intact or in place with that as well. As you notice, it is a large parcel with a lot of parcels included in that. Just to be clear on the subject site itself, again, it is outlined in black and hatched. The neighboring properties are all the dark red and red, which is 80 feet to 100 plus feet. That's the block. These, this blue color is 55 feet to 59 feet. Even the light blue color is 50 feet to 54 feet. So I would just like to show council for the record that this conforming map is what staff use for the staff analysis. And that is why we determined it to be inconsistent with the development pattern of the area.
May I ask a question to myself now? 1320 feet is a quarter of a mile, 440 yards. Am I correct?
You're correct, sir.
Well, then we're looking at that one and your map and his map are variant, the variant is different because he's going by the amount of registered letters you gotta send for 250 feet to crow five.
Correct, it's not.
Are there lots across the street and just to the one side of it that are the same size or smaller?
No, sir. As you can see, the subject parcel is outlined again here. The subject, the parcels to the south are this light red and they'd be 80 feet to 99 feet.
The ones, the ones I'm referring to over, are over here in the east. These here and up here in the north. And, and over here, I mean, I'm not disputing that these are larger lots, but they have side yards that, that are completely vacant. So anyway, we were following the East Tampa CRA guidelines regarding this. And I'll be happy to work with them and work with the city staff to come back with a better plan, but we respectfully request a continuance.
All right, can I get a motion to continue this item? So move for continuance. All right.
Citro.
We have a second from Councilman Vera, a second from Councilman Citro. And was this for December 10th at 6:00 PM, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, December 10th at 6:00 PM. Roll call vote on this continuance. We have the motion and the second.
Yes.
Goode.
Mr. Chairman, let me just make one comment before I give my vote.
Okay.
I'm always, you know, what we can't, what we can and can't do. I still have an issue with the lot size. I will be frank. I'll go ahead and vote to continue, but I'm going to be frank that I'm looking at that lot size and looking at that street in those, north to the south. I know how that, it is configured. And I believe the concept we have with Mr. Mickolini's design will be out of step with the, with the overlay design of, of East Tampa. And so I'll go and get a continuance on this motion here, but I can assure you, I'm going to be looking for a different concept. Thanks.
Goode.
Yes.
Dingfelter.
Yeah, I'm going to respectfully vote no because no matter what you do to the design, you can't change the lot size and and I just think you and your client would be going to a lot of trouble. And at the end of the day, I'd still be voting no, no matter what the design is because of the lot, because of the lot split. So I'm going to vote no.
Miranda.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
Emmaniscaco.
Yes.
Motion K with Dingfelter voting no.
Okay, we move to item number 21. Mr. Manassi.
Oh, I was just swearing in.
Is the applicant here?
That's me.
Oh, you again, Mr. Mickolini. Okay.
Please raise your right hand. One second, one more person. Do you swear a firm? You would tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And the clerks offered to not receive any written comments on this item.
Thank you very much.
Ryan Manassi, Planning and Design. Item number 21 is file number REZ 20-39 for the property located at 4502 West North B Street. The request before you is from RS50 Residential Single Family to PD for Residential Single Family Attached. I'd like to defer to Jennifer from the Planning Commission and then please return to me so I could finish my report.
Thank you, Brian. Jennifer Molder, the Planning Commission. I will ask to share my screen. Awesome. Thank you so much. This is located in the West Shore Planning District. I apologize. I scrolled up too fast on my PDF. They're with me for just a moment. It is within the West Shore Planning District. Carbus Route 30 serves the subject site with the closest transit stop located only 0.3 miles south of the subject site. It is an evacuation zone B. This is an aerial of the subject site. It is along North West North B Street. It is north of Kennedy Boulevard. There's commercial uses along Kennedy Boulevard. Kennedy Boulevard is a transit emphasis corridor with a lot of commercial uses. And then we transitioned to attached, single, attached housing units as we moved north. The adopted future land use of the subject site is residential 20. This future land use map is a little bit more air blown out than the aerial, just to give an idea of the surrounding area. So we do have the West Shore Mall, which is the regional mixed use 100 in the area. This parcel might look familiar to you. You heard this earlier tonight. The residential 35, the residential 20, residential 35 again, along West Kennedy Boulevard is the UMU 60. So this is a concentration of these higher residential land use designations in this area. You know, West Shore is one of the growth areas in the plan. And given the proximity to transit options and employment options, it is supported by the plan, these densities. So I would just also note that the the comprehensive plan also supports encouraging providing houses at density to support transit use and neighborhood services. This request is consistent with that underlying future land use designation of residential 20. When I was writing this report, I did review. There's been a lot of rezoning requests in this area and I would just note that the comprehensive plan does support the transition of this area as identified by that underlying future land use category at the residential 20. And there's also that residential 20, 35 in the surrounding area, which is even higher. But this pocket of residential 20 is in this area and this is, this is consistent with the comprehensive plan. We found the request to be comparable and compatible and it would be furthering that policy direction for the comprehensive plan. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Manassi.
Thank you Chair. Again, item number 21 is file number REZ 20-39 and please let me know if you see that title screen up. Excellent. The, again, the petitioner is proposing to rezone the property located at 4502 West North B Street from Single Family Residential RS50 to Plan Development PD to construct five single family attached dwelling units. The .39 acre property is located on the southwest corner of North B Street and Hesperity Street intersections. The property is surrounded by detached single family dwellings to the north in the residential multifamily RM12 and our residential single family RS50 zoning districts, detached single family dwellings to the south in the residential single family RS50 zoning district and RM18 zoning district. And also detached single family dwellings to the east and west in the RS50 zoning district. The project is proposed for five three-story building, townhouse style residential buildings, each unit containing a two-car garage. The proposed setbacks are in the south, two feet, west, 15 feet, east, 18 feet, and the north, three feet. The proposed building height is set at 35 per the site plan. A total of 11 parking spaces, including guest spaces are required and are being provided through a combination of garage and surface parking. The, there are three waivers before you. Come from transportation. And also, I'd like to show you that the rezoning map itself where the subject parcel is located, it's hatched in green. And Jennifer kind of pointed out the surrounding areas, but as you can see, it's a mixture of CG to the south and then going into CN residential multifamily. With some of these PDs being some of the similar style buildings attached in the area, the single family attached. And then the aerial map, the Tampani House is a historic landmark within a thousand foot area and that's what this buffer line is showing here. And then the subject property is outlined in red. The site plan itself, it's showing the four units that are located here, 1, 2, 3, 4, and then the fifth, you know, at this other end, that is where the drive access is on North B Street. The elevations, I have them on both sides of the screen, so the interior and the rear, it is asked that they label them as cardinal directions, north, southeast and west between first and second reading. Should this be approved? And then the subject site itself, the pictures that were taken from the site visit. The east neighbor, the single family dwelling units over here to the east and then as well as to the north. And the west neighbor, again, a single family residential dwelling unit. The developed review and compliance staff has reviewed the petition and finds that the request inconsistent with applicable city of Tampa land development regulations. Please reference the findings by the Transportation Division related to the reduction in the required parking. Should it be the pleasure of city council to approve the waiver and the application presented before you? There are further modifications required between first and second reading. And that's outlined in the, the revision sheet. And if you would include that in any ordinance, explained herein. Staff is available for any questions that you have as well as natural resources and transportation.
Questions for staff at this time? Councilman Dingfelter?
Not so much a question, just an observation. The looking at the tree report, Mr. Boris, it looks like the, the tree is similar to the last one he told us about. So I'm looking at the report. It's a C8, which is, as he said a minute ago, is not as low as you can go. And I don't know, was there anything else you wanted to add on that bill?
Yes, for me, please.
Do you swear a firm? You would tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
This was a, this tree has a presence, it's a 58-inch tree. And the issue with this tree is it's missing a substantial portion of its canopy due to overhead line pruning. It's a permanent U-shaped, V-shaped notch that took out its primary branches. So the branches are still firing up, the limbs are still firing up, are like 78 feet from the ground. As they point south towards the proposed development. Because the major limbs for the overhead line inside of the tree. Um, so it's a live oak. The positives are the tree could live for a long time. The negative is it's not got the natural characteristic form of an oak tree anymore. It's been hollowed out and inside did overhead line pruning, which is permanent. They're going to keep going back and encouraging that line clearance and the resulting growth is weakly attached water sprouts that break off readily. So it's a mixed bag on this one. If they weren't, it's not the right tree in the right place, put it that way. But functionally, it's a healthy tree. Structurally, it's been degraded due to the severe continual pruning of the tree. So you can't say it's a hazardous tree because it's not. It's just not in the right spot. It's only two feet from the sidewalk, too. It doesn't have an iconic appearance, but it has a presence because of its 58-inch diameter trunk. So on this one, it's a close call. You can make strong arguments to retain it. You can make arguments to remove it. And if the decision is to remove it, my recommendation, natural resources recommendation is to perhaps upsize the replacement trees. Give some quick canopy back there. To four-inch calipar trees, 18 to 20 foot tall.
You put the, you put the, those trees up again?
Yeah, and somewhere in the staff report, it says they only wanted to do two-inch trees.
Yeah. And, um, there's reasonable reconfiguration options here to try and work around this tree. And the applicant will discuss that with you. So it has something to do, it's their job to determine, you know, which way they want to go with it. And I'm just, I'm just talking about the tree now. And that it's really a close call whether to retain it or, or remove it.
Thank you, Sid.
Chairman.
Mr. Councilman Goode.
Let me ask a question. When you went and observed the tree, I'm looking at the street and the sidewalk. Is the roots of that tree causing, causing defects to that road right there?
Yes, they are. Those roots have, they have to have a massive rooting space to support that massive tree. So they're out into the road and yes, they are degrading their road.
So eventually it's going to bust that sidewalk up and, and also the surface.
That's what trees do. That's, that's correct.
All right. Thank you. Hearing nothing else, Mr. Mickolini.
Yes, sir. Let me, let me go through this basic proposal first, then I'll show you why that tree really can't be saved. I also have Ricky Federica with me for specific questions regarding the condition of the tree. And as you know, he's a certified arborist. This lot would allow the development of seven units. And we, we cut it back to six units. We couldn't get six units. We cut it back to five units, which is what we're proposing with you tonight. And we prepared three options, which we presented to, to Bill Morris. One option shows, which is the one we prefer. One option shows, which is the one we prefer, it shows the the five units, and let me put that up on your screen. It's it's option number one, and it shows that the tree, which would be right here, was being removed. Option two had four units, and it still is going to impact that tree, and I'm going to show you why in just a minute. And the option three was a fifth unit underneath the tree, but it's still is not really compatible with with what's going on here. Let me show you why this tree has got to has got to be removed. If you look, if you look at where those power lines are, all of this side of the tree would have to be pruned out. It's already in what was classified.
If you're intending to share your screen, we don't see it at the moment.
Okay, well, I don't know why it's. I don't know why. Is there there's supposed to be a prompt up here that says, share my screen? But I don't I don't see it. Oh, now it's showing.
All right, now we can see it.
There we go. This whole side of the tree is is inside the property and and would have to be significantly trimmed. We have this side, which is overhanging, but once you start trimming on this side, you you remove the balance of the tree. And as Councilman Goode's already pointed out, it this root system, it's only less, it's about a foot and a half off of the sidewalk to two feet. It's already destroying that sidewalk. We we certainly would be agreeable to upsizing the replacement trees and getting a nice new canopy in there. And if you recall on the new the new code, it encourages you to put in hardy new canopies and new growth to reforest the city. So we would definitely do that. We'll upgrade that. With respect to the Transportation Department's request for for a waiver, we're showing two parking spaces inside a garage. Is this showing on your screen?
Yes, we see it.
And we're showing two cars in the driveway, which meet the code. There's an interpretation by Transportation that we need a waiver for those two cars to count as as guest parking. And so that's that's respectfully requesting that that to happen. As the Planning Commission has pointed out, we they have found that we are consistent with their code, and we we are providing the guest parking. It's in the driveway plus a two-car gar in the garage. I'm going to show you another photograph of the of the tree. If I can get it to come over here. I don't think it was. There we go. You can see, you can see it's got significant dieback in here. It's not in that great a shape. You see the power lines going through here. And as Bill pointed out, it's going to continue to be impacted by TECO. It barely meets the separation now from the wires to the to the tree limbs. And and again, it, you know, with the storms that we have, and we're going to, we're going to see more significant cutting back of that. This is the, this is the view from the west side, looking east. And you can see the power lines here, and you can see how significant this tree has been impacted already. We would, we would agree to up sizing the replacement trees and adding to the to the reforestation and the and the tree canopy. And I guess I'll be happy to answer any questions, but I'll let you go through these brief statements that, does it promote the efficient and sustainable use of the land and infrastructure? Yes, we believe it does. We've reduced the number of allowable units from seven to five. It allows the integration of different land uses and densities. This area is already undergoing redevelopment for medium-density redevelopment for townhouses. It encourages the flexible use and development and reduces the transportation needs. We're within less than half a mile of the new transit center, or at least we believe the new transit center. It promotes and encourages the development of appropriate location, character, and compatibility. It is compatible, and it is an appropriate location for this type of development. Promoting the architectural features and elements, we believe that this is compatible, and we're respectfully asking that you adopt option one, which shows the five units. And if you have any specific questions other than what I had presented regarding the trees, Ricky Pederica is available.
Do we have any questions for the petitioner? Hearing none. Do we have anybody for public comment at the Convention Center or registered online?
No one has registered to speak on this item.
I leave the study of planning and development, and there's no one here to speak on this item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions or comments at this time? If not, may I have a motion to close this public hearing?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second from Councilman Miranda, second from Councilman Goode. Any objection? Hearing none. By unanimous consent, the public hearing is now closed. Councilman Miranda, would you mind reading the substitute resolution for item number twenty-one?
I'll read the substitute resolution, Mr. Chairman. File number twenty-one, REZ twenty dash thirty-nine. Read the substitute order being presented for first reading consideration ordinance rezoning property in general vicinity of forty-five oh-two West North B Street in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in section one from zoning districts classification RS fifty residential single-family to PD Plan Development Residential Single-Family attached, providing an effective date.
Second from Councilman Citro. Roll call vote.
Yara?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Ding Felder?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Maniscaco?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously. Second reading and adoption will be held on November fifth at nine-thirty a.m.
Thank you very much, Council.
Thank you. Item number twenty-two.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm you would tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
In the clerk's office, did not receive any written comments on this item.
Thank you very much.
Mary Semeniego, Planning, Design, and Development Coordination. This is item number twenty-two. It's REZ twenty thirty-two. Property located at thirty fifteen West Brew Street from RS fifty to PD. I defer to Jennifer Malone.
Thank you, Mary.
Go ahead. We can see the screen.
Okay, this is located in the Central Tampa Planning District within the West Tampa Urban Village. We are on West Brew Street and just east of North McDill Avenue. This is a typically single-family detached neighborhood. This is a school to the north. The subject site is residential ten, which is that blue or the orange color. We did find this consistent with the comprehensive plan. This is encouraging growth in our urban villages, and it is, if it is approved, the density would still be consistent with the underlying density that's planned for, or the residential ten, future land use designation. So we had an overall density of ten units per acre, which is meeting that maximum that we've planned for. Again, we seek to, the plan seeks to direct the greatest share of growth to the urban villages, which this would do, and we did find that it would not alter the character or development pattern of this portion of the neighborhood, and it would also create additional housing opportunities within the West Tampa Urban Village. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
All right, Mary.
Thank you. Can you please share my screen?
All right, go ahead.
Thank you. Again, this is REZ twenty thirty-two. The Development Review and Staff has found this consistent with the city of Tampa land development regulations and land development code. There are no waivers being requested. The subject property is a portion of two lots and an entirety of a third in the West Tampa overlay district. The proposed, the applicant is proposing the creation of two lots. The lot dimensions are forty-seven feet in width by ninety-five feet in depth, and each lot will total four thousand eight hundred sixty-six square feet in area. The required minimum lot size of the existing RS fifty is fifty feet in width by five thousand square feet in area. Therefore, the only way to create two buildable lots is through a plan development under single ownership, which is a reason for the rezoning tonight. The proposed setbacks for the single-family dwellings are fourteen from the front, five from the side, and fifteen from the rear, with the maximum building height of thirty-five feet. Both of both of the proposed driveways were out access the existing alley to the rear in compliance with the West Tampa overlay standards. Again, in an effort to comply with the West Tampa overlay standards and not have driveways kind of similar to the East Tampa, that adding into the front of the house. The applicant has worked with staff over several months to come up with this finalized design where the driveways will come off the alley to the rear, and then that pushes the building forward to that fourteen-foot setback, as we indicated. I will state, and it is in the staff report, that Urban Design did this, did find this application consistent.
All right. Any questions?
I'm not, I'm not finished here. I'm I'm going, I'll go quickly. Here's this aerial of the surrounding area. The analysis of the surrounding area, one hundred and thirty-two zoning lots were reviewed. Seventy-eight percent were greater than fifty feet, and twenty-two percent were less than fifty feet. Again, pursuant to the review, the subject block itself contained twenty zoning lots. Sixty percent were greater than fifty feet in width, and eight or forty percent were less than fifty feet. However, the block face at a total of thirty-two, thirty-two percent that were greater than fifty feet, but sixty-eight were less than. Let me zoom in, and let me show you. Here is the subject property in the red and the black hash marks. This gray color, those are the historically platted thirty-three-foot lots, which is how the original subdivision was plotted back in nineteen oh-nine. This is the McFarland Park subdivision. Again, those lots were historically platted, very small. So that's why you'll see all the gray colors, all the smaller lot widths. Again, these two lots are proposed at forty-seven feet. As you can tell by the legend, light gray is less than thirty-three, thirty-four feet, which again is the historically planted thirty-three feet. And then the lighter blue is forty-four-foot lots. So you can see in this block area, it the creation of the two forty-seven lots would be in conformance with that lot pattern. Here's some photographs of the surrounding area. Here's the subject property across the street on Spruce Street and to the east of the subject property and to the, I'm sorry, to the west of the subject property and to the east. That concludes my presentation. Again, land development or planning, design, and development coordination staff did find this consistent, and there are no waivers being requested.
Any questions? All right, hearing none. Petitioner, I see you on the screen.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay. Hello, Mr. Chairman, Councilmember. So thank you, Jennifer and and Mary for the the presentation. My name is Alex Castaneda. That's my father, Alexander Castaneda. I'll be speaking because I'm the one, he's the owner of the property. I'll be speaking because I'm the one that speaks English, and I'll be translating for so he can understand what what we're saying. And Mary basically said, also, what we plan to do, we plan to divide the lot in half. There's going to be, when we divide in half, it's going to be forty-seven feet. Each lot is going to be having, is going to have forty-seven feet in width. And there's a lot of houses in the on that same tree that were that were built on 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 the orig, on the original. It's like thirty to thirty-five feet. And why? It's a last monitor that what we plan to do. And we're open to any questions that you may have.
Do we have any questions for the applicants? Councilman Dayfelder?
Thank you. Mr. Castaneda, you sent out notices to your neighbors, to the neighbors around the property. Correct?
Yes, I did, yes.
Okay. And did you get any responses back? Any anybody object? Anybody have concerns?
None. No. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
I'm I'm, you know, I'm, I sit here and I amaze myself that we just heard one with forty-seven feet, and now we have another one in West Tampa, forty-seven feet. And if these were in South Tampa, they would never even be considered. So we either have a city, or we have a city that's divided like the country. One of the two. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Do we have anybody for public comment on this item? Item number twenty-two. Anybody at the Convention Center? Anybody registered to speak? Any recordings?
No one has registered to speak on this item.
I leave the study of planning and development. There's no one here to speak on this item. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Any other comments? If not, may I have a motion to close? We have motion from Councilman Miranda, second from Councilman Goode. Is there any objection to closing the public hearing? Hearing none. Without any objection, by unanimous consent, the public hearing is now closed. Councilmember Citro, would you mind reading the substitute for item number twenty-two?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Substitute ordinance being presented for first reading consideration ordinance rezoning property in general vicinity of thirty fifteen West Brew Street in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in section one from zoning district classification RS fifty residential single-family to PD and residential single-family detached, providing an effective date. As the petitioner has met the burden of proof and that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan, the proposed development, as shown on the site plan, promotes or encourages this development, does appropriate location, character, compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Here, Councilman Viera. Roll call vote.
Vera?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Ding Felder?
Yes.
Miranda?
I'm all voting no in protest, forty-seven foot. If it's not good for the rest of the city, it shouldn't be good for West Tampa.
Carlson?
No.
Citro?
Yes.
And Maniscaco?
Yes.
Motion carried with Miranda and Carlson voted no. Second reading and adoption will be held on November fifth at nine-thirty a.m.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Goode.
And I respect Mr. Miranda's opinion. He would be correct. The only problem we have that apparently one district has a rule and another one doesn't. So again, he's right. We're a place that are divided, and somehow we've got to come to a consensus in the city of how we will be together as one, because his point is correct. But I had to vote his way because there's a restriction.
I never question any one vote, believe me.
Thank you very much. We now go to the last item of the agenda. Item number twenty-three.
Mary Semeniego, Adam, Alex, you're done. Mary Semeniego, last item in the gin is REZ twenty fifty-four. It's a rezoning request for a place of religious assembly or rezoning from RS fifty to PD. for rezoning from RS fifty to PD. I defer to Jennifer Malone.
Jennifer Malone was your planation. Oh.
Wait.
I'm sorry.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm you would tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And it works off of the comments on this item.
All right, please begin. Jennifer Malone.
Okay, Central Tampa Planning District, uh, the request is to allow the expansion of an existing place of religious assembly. It's in within the Florence Villa Beasley slash Oak Park neighborhood or Route fifteen serves subject site. It's within evacuation zone E. We're east of Interstate four, south of twentieth. It's a very large parcel right in the middle of the neighborhood at approximately two point two eight acres. The surrounding neighborhood is pretty solidly single-family detached, uh, which is reflected by that future land use tax. So the adopted future land use of the subject sites residential ten, that is typically single-family detached. However, these churches and daycares, et cetera, can be considered within this land use category to the southeast community mixed use thirty-five and the pink color, which allows commercial uses. Uh, we did find this consistent with the comprehensive plan. This church has been a part of the established neighborhood since about nineteen forty-five. So we found that an expansion would actually probably be beneficial to the neighborhood and continuing to strengthen that sense of place. Additionally, um, the residential ten has a very low FAR limit at about a point five. The applicant is, is not even coming close to, 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 to reaching that density. The proposal is still well below the maximum square footage that can be considered in this category with such a large site. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
All right, Mary.
Thank you. Can you share my screen, please? Thank you. Can you see it?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, the Development Review and compliance staff found this application inconsistent with the City of Tampa Land Development Code. Please reference the development, transportation, development review related to parking lot access and parking payment waiver, plus natural resources regarding waiver reductions. The applicant, as Jennifer stated, has an existing church use on the property. The property is two point two eight acres. Um, the existing church use occupies two thousand four hundred seventy-eight, seven fifty-seven square feet of building and was built in nineteen forty-five. Therefore, it currently exists in the residential zoning district as a special use not considered, not conforming. The applicant is proposing to retain the existing building and to construct a new six thousand eight hundred and forty square foot, one-story structure. So the overall site would have a maximum capacity of four hundred forty-nine seats. Go to the site plan. They propose setbacks are forty feet from the north, forty feet from the south, forty feet from the east and forty feet from the west, and the maximum overall height is thirty-five feet. Here's the existing place of religious assembly and the hair addition. The place of religious assembly property encompasses in effect this entire block. It's bound on all sides by rights of local street rights of way. A total of one hundred and thirty-five parking spaces are required based again on their seating capacity of four hundred forty-nine. They're asking for a parking lot waiver reduction from one hundred thirty-five spaces to one oh five, which is a twenty-five percent reduction. Also, as I just stated, all of the roads that they have access to are all local roads and one of the special use criteria that is required to be gauged against this application is that places of religious assembly are supposed to access directly to Arturo collectors. Unfortunately, they're, all the surrounding properties are all local roads. So that is the second transportation-related waiver that the applicant is requesting. The third waiver that is required is that whenever a parking lot or a vehicle use area busts a right of way, there's an eight-foot required buffer in certain, oops, I apologize. In certain locations, um, the buffer is reduced because of the required installation of sidewalks. And the parking lot encroaches slightly into those vehicle use area buffers. So again, that is the third waiver, I'm sorry, the first natural resources related waiver. Instead of having a foot area buffer along the right of way to the north, in some places it's reduced down to two feet and then to the east is reduced down to five feet. Um, saying that again, overall, the Development Review and compliance staff did find it consistent because of the waivers requested. Local street access, a twenty-five percent parking reduction. I'm sorry, I forgot to mention, um, some of the proposed lots are, some of the proposed parking is proposed to be grass parking, which is customary for places of religious assembly, but that is a waiver request. And then also finally, the reduction of the use buffer along the right of way to the north down to two feet from eight and on the east from five, from eight feet to five. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Do you have any questions? All right, hearing none. Petitioner, I see you're, you're on, Frank.
Yeah, um, I, I, I was gonna say good evening, but good morning to, to everyone and thank you all for your patience tonight. I'm Frank Kendrick and I'm with New Jack Companies and we're the construction manager for this property. The owner is, uh, is present tonight. Also, the pastor, Pastor Charles Lusant, and he's on the, uh, he's there as well as Shadali LaSalle to speak on behalf of the church. This church is presently occupying a, a, a building, single-story building. They've been in this building for a number of years, almost a decade, and they've done, they've basically outgrown this facility, but they have lots of land as was presented earlier. Uh, and so they're looking to build a new sanctuary directly behind the existing facility, six thousand square foot sanctuary that would accommodate about four hundred occupants, a little over four hundred occupants. And so we're just asking for, I know there's a number of waivers they're asking for, but this is truly a community church.
All right, any questions? No, we'll go to the pastor, sir.
I want you to swear them in.
Oh, go ahead.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm you would tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Yes.
Make sure that you're, you're, okay, thought you were muted. Go ahead.
Yes, we do.
Okay, if you'd like to go ahead.
Yes, we do.
Go ahead and speak if you want.
Just introduce yourself. Tell a bit about the church.
Okay. Good evening, uh, council members. My name is Pastor Charles recent, the senior pastor of the, of, of this church. Quest and Mercy, Asian Church. Uh, as you know, in the past five years, we bought this land with a small building, a straight building in order to build a new sanctuary for the people. Uh, as you know, the building has seventy-five years old. It is, it is a very old building. We don't have enough space in order to put our members. When you, when the previous owner built this site, it was built for fifty people. Now we have two fifty, two hundred fifty members. You're gonna understand the situation that we face in order to put all the members of the church in this site, in this location. That is why tonight we come before you in order to have from you and your approval in order to build a bigger church, a comfortable church. Because they, we have a lot of, of university students. Fifty percent of the church are youth and kids. Need some classrooms in order to do Bible study for, for them. In order to have a, some conference for, for some educational conferences for the youth. Uh, many of youth, many youths are students in some universities like a USF, for example. So we need a, a bigger church in order to have our, our dream church. We need your approval. You need, we need your consent. That is why I'm, I'm here tonight in order to discuss, discuss with you, to explain you the situation what we face. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Any questions or comments? All right, do we have anybody from the public that is registered to speak? Or is at the Tampa Convention Center?
I leave the side of planning and development and there's no one here to speak on this item. Thank you.
Share. Do you have anybody?
Yes, Chair, we have at least, at least eight members that are available to speak and I will move them over one by one.
Okay. And I'll keep the time here and we'll swear them in.
Please raise your right hand.
Hold on.
Wait, wait. We have more coming.
All right, everyone that's available to speak, please unmute yourself and turn on your video.
All right. Please turn on your camera if you're logged in.
I would like to mention I have at least two other members, Eddie Lewis and Emerald Francois. They are on devices that I cannot elevate as a panelist.
Okay.
Wow.
Okay, is there anybody else that is here to speak that has not turned their camera on? I only see one. All right, um, if looking to swear in the gentleman, Charles, uh, Louison. Okay, we have another person. Is there anything else that is here to speak that has not turned their camera on?
All right, Chair, it looks like, um, Jean Ellis, Jean Judy, Jean Baptiste Joseph, as well as Elizar Castan does not have video capabilities.
Okay, you have to have video in order to, uh, to speak. All right, we have another. All right, let's begin with the, uh, three that we have. If you could please raise your hands, your right hand and we'll swear you in. If you could raise your right hand.
Can he hear you, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Francois with the red shirt, if you could raise your right hand, please. Okay, uh, sir Charles, if you could, okay, go ahead.
Can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear affirm you would tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes. Yes, I do.
Thank you.
All right, we'll begin with, uh, Charles. You have three minutes to speak and I will start the timer.
Hello, everyone. Did you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, my name is Kenny Lou Saint. I live in Gistleton, Florida, one one three one nine, South Moon Lake Drive. Thank you for taking this time to hear me. I'm a youth member at Grace and Mercy Baptist Church and I support this case. And I just want to share a few words on why I support this case. So I'm a university student at the University of South Florida. Everyone is inviting students to their churches. Hey, come join us this Sunday, man. But I can't do that because I don't know if I'll find peace for them. We're in the twenty-first century and technology is off the chain. The times are changing. What worked back then won't work now. So a building that was built for a church in nineteen forty won't do in twenty twenty. Everyone is growing. And it's like, we're stuck in nineteen forties. We need to grow. So everything around us is, is, is growing. When you plant a seed, you have to make room for it to grow. We planted a seed, now it's growing and the building can't contain us anymore. Imagine you and your spouse and your four children living in one bedroom. That's how we feel. The women's group can't grow. Can't grow. The youth group can't grow and the kids group can't grow. We're all in, in, in each other's way. And the day you stop growing is the day you start dying. This is what's happening. Our youth is leaving the church. Why? Because they don't have them to give. When the youth leave the church, who's gonna hold the church up tomorrow? This is why we need to build this bigger church. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker will be Linda Abraham. If you'd like to go ahead.
Yes. Good evening, uh, Chairman and the Councilors. Thank you for having us today. Basically, my concern with, um, I'm here to support us, uh, building the church. It's, it's, as, as, as our pastor said earlier, it is a, it's been a old church. It's been here for years. And then the idea of us buying the land, it's not really for the church. It just forced us to build a church. We want, we want to be able to build a church, not just buy the, you know, the building on top of the land, but basically we got the land, not because of the building. So we want to be able to build the church that we want. As our pastor said earlier, uh, we have more than three hundred something members. And then we have people that really wanted to come, but there was no space. Every time we're doing like even a youth conference, it is that people staying outside. And then so all of the members outside and people invited coming in and so even also we cannot even enjoy our own services. So, um, we really want to have your approval so we can build that church. It's really small. I know you might not be inside of it to see. And then it's have only one bathroom and you cannot even do much on it. You cannot even do number twos. I'm so sorry for saying that. You can't even floor. So there is a, it, it's a lot. There's a lot going on inside. And we just can't, can't do it or we can't do it anymore. As I, as I said, the main reason why we buy the land and if you see the building, it's a small one, but the land is way like, you know, way, I mean, it's, it's a lot of land. So there is no way we bought the land just for the building. No way, you know? So definitely we really want for, for us to be able to build that for now, our dream church. I mean, I know it's not gonna be in the future. We manage something way bigger. But for now, I mean, if we can have like four hundred or five hundred, uh, members church, I think that would be like a big step up for us, you know, and even for the community. Like when you come with kids, so like being my myself, I have a toddler. So when I come to church with them, like even running around, like, you know, it just took everything. There is no, there is no other building, no other room you can't even take him to. There is no, you know, none of that. But we wanna be able to build, really be able to create all this thing. I said like sometime when we have the youth who went to the university, sometimes they're not even speak our languages and then they have to have their And then they have to have their own teacher.